I'd like to call together, I mean, call to order this meeting of the Planning Board for October 16th, 2019. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance is shea flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Welcome, everyone. I am, we have a few continuances today that I'd like to get out of the way first. If I may have a motion.
Motion to take item 6A out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Item 6A is a public hearing, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 84 Bedford Street, Crown Castle for Sprint is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of November 7th, excuse me, 2019 as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated October 15th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero.
Motion to take item 70 out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Item 7E is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.22.2. Solar energy system ground bounded of the zoning bylaws, 50 Margaret Street Northeast, Solar Services Doing Business as Revolution is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of November 7th, 2019, as requested by the applicant in email dated October 15th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Next, we have citizens' time. If there is anyone in the audience that came to speak on an item that is not on our agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
I first want to thank, it's not on there, but I first want to thank members of Spay O. and Gaffney for attending, remind me again, the organization?
It was Lego Club?
The junior robotics, the Marshall's High Middle School, Junior Devilbots, I think they're called.
Okay, awesome. Just wanted to make sure I got that correct. They sent you a thank you card, I'll pass it around, it's very, very nice, and I would just appreciate, sorry, we weren't able to make it, but very glad that you guys were able to attend, it looked like a great time. So as that's going around, second, also not on there, but I am pleased to announce that only after four days of advertising, we have seventeen candidates-
Cool.
-for our assistant planner position.
Wow.
Great.
That's awesome.
So, we have till the, it closes on the eighth, so we have a little time, I was worried that things weren't going to come in as quickly, so, but that's super news.
Terrific.
So-
It's a great town, so who wouldn't want to work here?
Seventeen in a couple days is amazing, so I'm very pleased.
It's awesome.
Announcements, the Reserve at Burlington, which is the residential building on Corporate Drive, has a ribbon cutting on October 24th at 9:00 AM at the Reserve. There is a reminder, open meeting law training is October 23rd at 4:00 PM, will be one session, there'll be a second session at 7:00 PM, Town Council will be leading the discussion. I would encourage everyone who's involved in any part of town government to attend, it's always helpful to be reminded of the ins and outs of open meeting. Second, or third, Board of Health, the Free Walk-In Flu Clinic is October 26th from 12 to 3:00 at Memorial School at 125 Wind Street. The deadline for zoning warrant articles is fast approaching, October 29th, to be submitted to the Board of Selectmen's Office. Veterans Day, November 11th, all town offices will be closed, but there also will be a Veterans Day ceremony at 10:00 AM on the Veterans section of the Town Common. In climate weather, it'll be at the Burlington High School gym. That's all, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any legal notices or non approvals, so we're going to move on to matters of appointment. Item 7A is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 175 Bedford Street, 175 Bedford Street LLC is the applicant. Welcome, could you please state your names for the record?
Kenneth Jung, 175 Bedford Street LLC.
Christopher Jung, owner of Mac Designer Hardware, co-owners, tenant to be of 175 Bedford Street.
Ree Sullivan, Bayside Engineering.
Okay, so, the last time you were here, we reviewed the preliminary site plan, do you have any changes that you want to make us aware of since our last meeting?
So the changes are fairly minor, the changes were made based on comments from the commission, from the board at the last meeting. So basically, we've added striping here, just delineating the walkway to pedestrians coming from the parking in the rear to the door in the front, have a fairly safe way to get We also added vegetation in the front here, the planting area wasn't shown on the previous plan, so it's been shown here, and we called out the planning there and gave you a sample of what we're proposing. The reason why we chose what we chose is because in an area like this, winter's going to be difficult on shrubs in front of a building like this, that may get snow piled on top of it, so a perennial hosta can be cut back, and we don't have to worry about damaging it in the winter, and it'll come back every year. After some discussion, we have decided to keep this access here two ways, and we plan to sign it appropriately here and here, two-way traffic and watch for pedestrians. We updated the parking calculation over here and provided you supporting documentation from Trip Generation Manual, Fifth Edition, with the technical memorandum. And that's basically it for the plan changes.
Okay, thank you. Staff?
So, there's a couple things that we wanted to suggest, based on the, a couple things we wanted to suggest and a couple questions that we had for the board. We met with the applicant, actually, as well as the owner of the funeral home down the street, who's in the audience as well, to talk about possibilities of alternative routes around, in and around the area, as brought up by the board at the last meeting, and I'll go into that in a minute. The other thing we brought up was the area where the dumpster is, that in order to make sure that that space would be open, that we had recommended that it either be employees only in that single space and/or time limited based on when they have their dumpster pickup. Also, vegetation along the front of the site, we had recommended to them, in the planting areas to, we'd like to see something of a height of, you know, at least not super low, but, you know, three to four feet, so you can still see through the windows, recognizing that in winter months are probably lower. And then, something that we'd want to ask a question of the group is on, if you're looking at the plan, on the right side of the doorway, is there an opportunity to create a larger planting area that we could have a little bit more, it's, the whole site's a really tight site, but there's that little strip in front, but there isn't a parking space right there because it would be hard to navigate to that corner, but is there, is there a possibility to widen out that, that planting bed a little, to have something a little bit more substantial right on that side of the door? The other thing was the question about one, two, one or two-way traffic, my, in how you let people know that it is either one of those two things. I think it's difficult to mandate one-way traffic unless there's a formal easement elsewhere. I think we, as we met, met on site, or not met on site, met with the neighbor down the street, there is definitely willingness to keep that open, and so you can drive around and drive out, it's actually pretty pervious on the other side of the site, and if Liz can bring up the aerial of this, of the site, you can see it a little bit better, but that there's willingness to, between the neighbors, to keep that open and be able to navigate from the site to the square, kind of the square roof, that's the funeral home, navigate through there and exit out either side, preferably probably the right side of the funeral home, and/or you could go through the other plaza, but there are options on that side, so to make sure that there is nothing that blocked that access route. So there is willingness to allow for that movement, the question is kind of how formal that, that is. I don't think you can, on a property, I don't think you can say to someone that you have to make it one way, and we are making, you know, without an agreement, you know, having to exit over another property. But I think as the applicants here, as well as the owner of 171, 171 Bedford Street, the opportunity for conversation is in front of us, so I think that's good. And I think there should be some comfort in allowing for the different movements. What else was I going to say? So also, there was discussion last meeting about a door that can be accessed from the parking area into the building, we wanted to understand that a little bit more, so we just wanted to talk through that at this meeting to kind of figure out where we're going with that, as well as potential opportunities for landscaping in although a small area between the Burlington Motors and the site, if there was any, anything we could do to that end. In the decision, you're also, so there's a finding for, for parking, right now, the building is proposed to be kind of a retail showroom on the first floor with Mac Designer Hardware, the second floor, they're not sure if they're going to move into the second floor or use it for another tenant, it's right now that parking is calculated as if it were to be office, which is fine and it works, if it is to be something else, they need to come back in front of this board to, for an additional finding to make sure that it still works. So that condition is in the approval. I think, I think I have covered everything, but I'll think of it as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Paul, would you like to start us off with questions?
I'd just come in.
Oh, well, if you-
No, my concern is primarily conservation as far as this site is concerned, if it's okay with conservation-
Conservation approved the project at their last meeting.
Good, so that was, that was my primary concern.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Joe?
So the Selectmen, no comment, Inspector Billings was, comments were from August 5th, so I assume we already have read those in, right, those are all fine. DPW was from September 25th, and the meeting was after that, so I assume those are old as well. Fire Department, approval with the following modifications, one sprinkler system to be reviewed slash approved with the Fire Department, fire alarm system to be reviewed slash approved with the Fire Department, and then, and a Knox box is required. You had those comments, okay. Next was the Board of Health, and that's from 916 as well, so I assume those were read in last meeting. Conservation is from 930, so I assume those were read in at the last as well, and I think it just indicates that an order of conditions will be, is expected to be issued.
They, and they have issued it and they have approved it, so we don't have-
Yeah, so it's an all comment, so-
Yeah, so we, but they have issued it.
So, my comments are, I, you know, we had discussed earlier trying to get some, I know what the landscaping, trying to get some landscaping, that left side, I gotta, I have a hard time, I mean, if we, you know, how are we going to know at what point we're going to, are they going to attempt to get approvals to, you know, exit somewhere else? I don't, I don't know how we can give a, an access and an egress on a side that, that won't even accommodate two vehicles.
You could pause comments and have them present what has been discussed with the neighbor.
I think that's a good idea, but what you're presenting is two-way access in and out on that road and a striped area for pedestrians.
Yes.
How does that fit?
It fits.
Explain that to me.
It's a ten-foot lane, which is not ideal, but we're actually allowed to have ten-foot lanes on the roadway, in some instances, well, we use them on the roadway, and that leaves three and a half feet for pedestrians.
But ten feet was for, if two cars, if one car's coming out and another car's coming in at the same time, they won't fit.
Right, right, it's a, it's a fairly short run, the only other option in this location is to change the building. I mean, that's the only other way we can do this, other than an arrangement with the, with the abutter. So, I mean, it's a tough site.
It is a tough site, yeah.
You know, signing it the way that we're signing it, warning the traffic coming in and going out that it's two-way traffic, you just, I mean, you can see where the other car is entering fairly easy from either end, it's not like-
So it's, so it's a ten-foot lane?
Ten-foot wide, yes.
And what's the width of a pickup truck?
Uh, six and a half feet, maybe seven feet.
So if you got, literally, if two vehicles, one was coming in each direction, you know, came into the middle, they couldn't even pass?
Someone would have to back up.
Back up all that distance, right?
In Europe, they do that a lot.
In Europe?
Yeah, this is trying to bring to use a site that had, no, but the site has been sitting there, as Ernie is bobbing his head for a long period of time, and sometimes you have to, you know, agree to something that's not ideal, but-
Well, I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if there's other-
We have every right to, to not approve this.
No, and I don't want to not approve it, but I, but I would like to know if there's some other options that could be explored as far as, you know, each one of those, I know that, you know, the lots behind the properties of all the two or three, three or four properties there are, are all connected somehow, I'm wondering if we can get something that would be a safer traffic flow than-
Could you possibly, when a, when a vehicle ends up from the back, a red light goes on out front, in other words, it says you can't come in? I'm just thinking of a way that you could accommodate that.
I, I have the concern about vehicles, but I also have a concern about people walking along there, I mean, it's striped, but there's nothing protecting those people, and if they're walking, if they're close to the front of the building and somebody comes around that corner, they're not going to see them until the last second, and there's not a lot of space there.
Wondering about the possibility of a, you know, with the, with the station, if you didn't want to deal with two or three properties, you know, traveling over two or three properties, that would be an easier fix, but there's also the possibility of an easement with the, with the abutting property, and just widening that, you know, using an easement and widening that, that drive lane to accommodate, you know.
I think that's also why that back door becomes very important, because you want to try and get as many people going in the back door as possible, because you don't want people walking along that building where cars that are entering can't see them. I don't want that.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't think, I don't think site distance is an issue here, I mean, it's a straight shot, people are going to enter who are familiar with the site, I think, you know, if you have office space upstairs, the people are going to be familiar with it, if you, let's say you have a dance studio upstairs, people are taking classes there, they're going to know where to enter and exit the site on the left side because it's easier than maneuvering the turn, so when cars are parked in the front, the maneuver here, the turning movement here is very restricted, otherwise you're going to hit a vehicle, so you have to be going slow. There's no way you can come around that corner at any rate of speed that's going to startle someone.
Well, let's, let's say, let's use your example of a dance studio, let's say you have a dance studio up there-
That's my worst nightmare, you have little children running there.
Well, not only children, but you get parents dropping kids and then-
Yeah.
-coming in to pick them up while other parents are taking off at the same time, leaving, and, and it's going to be bottlenecked right there in that, in that drive aisle, like, I, I'm not sure how you get around that, that, that would be one of the worst scenarios I could think of.
Yeah.
And it's probably a likely, could be a likely scenario.
I mean, I can tell you that, right now, in an abutting community, there is a public way that's a single lane that is impaired, that has impaired its light signs of lights-
That's, that's, what people are doing in other towns is really not relevant here, it's-
Right, a public way, what?
It's a public way-
Within the commercial site?
No, no, it's a public way that's traveled by cars on a daily basis, it's a single lane, and it has an obstructed view-
Well, I get it, but if that public way is serving a house, or two houses-
It's not, it's a public way, it's a street.
Well, I know, but it's, is it a throughway is another, it could be a public way, it doesn't make it a throughway, so-
It is a throughway. It doesn't matter, another town is doing something unsafe, I don't care.
I go on that road twice, I go on that road twice a day.
Or the bridge.
I do the bridge twice a day.
Are you talking about the way it runs in?
Butters Road Bridge, so I can, I can, if you want to hear experiences on that, I can tell you.
That's terrible.
I hate that, that's very unsafe. I've done, I've worked in the same place for twenty-five years, I've done it thousands of times, I can tell you the issues with that.
Yes, it's very unsafe.
It's not, it's not, it's not good.
Madam Chair, could I ask staff a question?
Sure.
Could we permit this for this user, and if another user was to come back, because this is, this is classed as retail, but it really-
Right, it's more like a showroom.
It's more of a showroom.
It is.
So could, could we do that, or not?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, we have a condition, I mean, the site's a tough, no, 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 we don't have a, we have a parking finding, because the building's way too big for the site, just in general, it's, we, we have the situation in other parts of town, it's always, we always go through kind of this, it's a little bit of a challenge for the conversation, because it's an existing building, and we don't want to leave all our buildings vacant in town, we want to use them, but we want to use them so they work in the right way. It is an existing situation, so, it's, just for this board, it's not as if they're proposing something that doesn't exist, that makes it more-
That's not really dangerous than it is. It's changed because of the conservation conditions.
Right, it's not exist-
Before people entered on the right side of the building and went around, they didn't have two lanes of traffic-
Right.
-on one side.
So, and as I mentioned earlier, I think that we should be exploring alternative access points, and the abutter, or the neighbor down the street-
Let's do that.
-is, is here to discuss that.
Yes, let's do that.
We can't, we, we encourage the conversation to make that a formal way, it's hard for us to mandate that someone go over another property.
Well, of course, we can't mandate, it's got to be something that they-
We want, we want it to, the coordination to work, so we can use the site and make it as viable as possible.
Right, so have conversations gone on between you and your neighbor?
Yes, and we actually met with Kristen, all of us together in the same room around the same table, and, and we're actually on the same page with mutual cooperation between both parties. We have also agreed that we would not block any access between those two parking areas, and we believe that we'd be able to, on areas or times of low demand, this is not going to be an issue at all, I mean, like, we've got four or five cars at any given time total between all of our employees and customers, we may have one or two customers in the building at any given time. I, I just don't think this will be much of an issue, and I think a lot of people that, if you were going down that driveway, you'd see another car coming in, you would just stop and wait for them to go. Unfortunately, we don't have any other space on that other side because we've had to remove all that pavement for the conservation commission. Now, as was said earlier, this building has been vacant for-
I'll tell you what I would, if I, if I were a driver, and I wasn't familiar with it, and I saw a car coming at me on, on a road that wide, I'd be thinking, this is not a, this is not a two-way traffic, I would be thinking, I'm, I'm going the wrong way on a one-way.
What if we change-
I'd probably turn around completely and try to get out of there.
We could change the signage to say, "Two-way traffic on single lane," would that, would that be sufficient?
Well, first of all, what did you, what kind of agreement did you come to with your neighbor, if any, because that might help.
So, we had a verbal agreement, we also signed, from the last time we talked, we wanted something in writing, so we have a memorandum of understanding that is not legally binding between either party, but we have agreed that we would not block access between either party, and we would be as cooperative as possible as we try to redevelop our sites. So I have a copy of what that would look like right here.
Did Mike read the Fire Department comments on this?
Yes, I think Joe read them, the-
Because I was staring.
Yeah, the Knox box and that.
How wide a lane does the Fire Department need? Ten feet's fine, okay.
Well, they can, they can also use this gesture.
True.
Yeah, I mean, they, they can stay to the park on that other front.
No, I think, I think it's ten plus three.
Fourteen feet wide with the-
Is it fourteen? I thought she said it was ten.
I think just the drive aisle is ten.
It was fourteen, and I think we were taking ten for the vehicle traffic and leaving the rest for the pedestrian traffic.
So this, this has not been executed?
I have, I have a signed copy here.
Okay.
That's not a, that's, that was a pre-printed copy.
But it has been signed by both parties?
Correct.
Okay.
This will be a signature page, yes.
Okay, so, Kristen, this is a memorandum of understanding, but it's not legally binding, so where does that leave us?
Well, it's a memorandum of understanding between the two property owners, so, you know, it's a, it's a contract between the two of them, it's not, you know, it's not filed at the registry, I think so long as this exists, I mean, you need to, you need to condition it that this needs to exist, and if it doesn't exist, we need to come back.
So if this were to, if, if either party were to decide that this was no longer in their best interest and were to exit the agreement, we can condition it that then they have to come back to us?
Well, I, I'm not sure that they-
I mean, we, we would and/or-
Something like that, right?
Yeah, I mean, for instance, you have a lot of memorandum of understandings between property owners who share parking on different sites, that, you know, we approve this because you're allowing ten spaces on the property next door, because the property next door has the ability to allow you, that's, those spaces. If that agreement lapses, then you need to come back because the agreement we made was you needed, you needed twenty spaces, and now you only have ten. So it's, it, the use itself doesn't work anymore, so I think you can condition it that way, and/or, you know, have it be more, you know, more, a more formal easement.
If that's the case, perhaps the signage should not encourage two-way traffic, but rather direct people out the back.
If there-
Yes.
I mean, if there's a, a contract between the property owners, they need to, each other needs to respect the contract, if that changes, we need to know about it.
No, no, I understand that, I'm just saying, assuming that this is in place.
Well, this is allowing, we can't say you need to go through another person's property. If this says you can go through another person's property, you know that there is a memorandum of understanding to allow this motion, therefore, this motion should be-
Right, and what I'm saying is, given that, let's assume that this is in place, can we then condition it that the signage must direct people out the back way?
You can ask the applicant, yes.
So, I, I think, as a driver, most people will follow the path of least resistance, coming out of parking lots, things like that, I always think of, well, what's the easiest way for me to back out of the site, what's the easiest way for me to leave a site, and there are places that are probably just as bad, if not worse, than, than this site. I think every time that I've gone onsite, I've always gone and cut through that other, that other lot, and I think the vast majority of the people would probably do the same once they're familiar with the site.
Right, but if there's signage there telling them, "You can go out this way," that helps, because if I went to that site, I don't know if I would realize that I could go out the back, if I parked closer to the building, I might not realize that that was an option, but if there was a sign directing me, "Exit this way," then I would follow it.
Well, if you had an arrow on the, on the ground, just a one-way arrow, you know.
So I think we, it would help if we direct drivers out that way.
Okay, so, so what if we just did, to, to the suggestion of, of Mr. Mempa, a, an arrow in the back across the other, to the other parking lot to say, "Exit"?
Yeah, I was thinking an arrow in from the outside, and then an arrow out in the other direction, so-
And perhaps even-
indicating if traffic flow should be-
I would think a sign so that if I parked in that back parking lot, and then I pulled out of my parking spot and headed toward the front of your building, so I'm now facing your building, and I'm going to turn right into that narrow lane, if there was a sign on the building saying, "Exit that way," I'd turn around and go the other way. It's not saying, "Do not enter," because I understand we're not allowed to say that, but we could encourage that movement out the back, and I think that would, that would make me feel more comfortable, and I also think it's very important that you take that back entrance and you make it look like the entrance to your building, so that as many people as possible enter that way, and you don't have very many people walking along that narrow walkway.
So, so that back entrance cannot be used to go into the second floor at all? That is only to the first floor, so we, we will not be able to use that as a, as an entrance into the building for any other tenant other than ourselves?
So they, they can enter into the first floor, but there's no way to get upstairs?
On that new, that's actually a new opening that opens directly into our showroom.
And you can't get from the showroom upstairs?
On the other side of the building, there is a stairwell entrance that goes either into the first or second floor.
So in other words, someone who entered that door who wanted to go upstairs would have to walk across your showroom to get to the stairs?
Correct, which is, I don't think, what we want to do. So the front of the building would be the main entrance to either floor?
I want to hear for the people on the right.
Okay, but it Yes, would be the main entrance for your showroom, but also for any tenant that was upstairs would have to come through the front?
Correct.
That's problematic for me, but, okay, let's continue.
Well, I'm not done with my comment.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Because the other comment was that, if it is going to be a one-way, my preference would be to have the walk, a very, you know, a delineated, delineated walkway, but not on the side of the building. Rather have it on the other side, and the car drive on the side of the building, because I can only picture somebody looking down at a phone, and somebody walking against the building, and the car veering and squashing them against the building.
And they can't go anywhere.
Whenever we have any kind of car, vehicle traffic, we've always got bollards that are stopping vehicles from pinning people between buildings. And this is one of those scenarios, I could see a car veering off into that lane, and a pedestrian having nowhere to go, because there's a, there's a wall on one side, and then a car on the other side of them. So at least, if, if the delineated walkway was on the outside, they wouldn't be pinned against anything if a car veered off, it would
Jump behind a tree.
Well, you know, more likely be able to
Escape.
Escape. I, I, I don't like, I don't like the setup, I don't, I don't like that setup at all. In fact, I'd prefer, and I know, I understand that the other side, you're going to have a dumpster, but I, you know, if there's going to be no traffic on the other side, they should have a, a walkway on the other side, instead of a, instead of on the drive side, because it's just such a long, you know, a long building, you know, cinder block building, it's just, it's just not a, it's not a good place for people to be, pedestrians to be walking.
Right.
I'd prefer to see it on the other side.
So, so we had considered that as an option, we chose to put it on the side of the building for more, more ambient lighting, as well as lightings that's going to be on the building to illuminate that walkway. So that was the reason we chose that side. We did have this debate internally as to which side.
Yeah, I mean, that, that even concerns me more, the fact that the hours will be a dark, you'll have dark, you'll nighttime hours, and you get someone walking that distance on
So, our, our showroom closes at 5:30 every day, Monday through Friday, really, and Saturday's only at 2:00. So I don't think any of the hours are really going to be at night, other than during the winter, you might have one hour maximum where, where it starts.
Is that in our conditions as well?
The time?
Yeah.
Not yet.
Those are my major concerns, I, I, you know, I also, like I said, I want to see landscaping, I would like to see, you know, I know, I think that right side is going to be, is it going to be grass? What, what is the right side of the building?
It's, it's going to be
It's a stormwater BNP, it has to stay, it has to stay grass.
Has to stay grass.
It's part of the stormwater treatment system.
Right. But it has to stay permeable, right?
Yes. When the calculations are done, it's done for grass. I mean, if I do that, I got to go back and revise the plan.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I'd like to see some trees down that side, and maybe some, some landscaping somewhat to get, give, give some dimension to the property. It's just so stock and, and I know, I, I get you, you're dealing with an existing property. I know it's not easy to retrofitter existing property like that.
If, if I may, I'd like to give you a little context, Mr. Vice Chairman, I know you weren't here at the last meeting, but my father and I are small business owners, and we've had this building open, or our, our business opened for about three and a half years on Middlesex Turnpike. Our lease was actually up on June 30th, and we had been trying to purchase this building since like, last October. And we ran into many problems with the prior seller, who dragged his feet and didn't move his, his property out, was actually in default when we were trying to close, and, and we went past the closing, because he was in default, because he didn't clean out the property. That delayed us several months. Since then, we've been trying to work very closely with the Planning Department, with the Conservation Commission, with all of the departments all around town, the Board of Health. We found asbestos on the property, we spent $40,000 to remove that. We are spending over $100,000 to put solar panels on the roof. We are planning to spend over a million dollars to renovate this building, to get us to be able to move down the street, because we're renting right now from Nord Blue. If we delay much longer, and the Department of Public Works is refusing to talk to us about getting a water main hooked up and the sprinkler systems tested, until the approval from this board is in writing. Their moratorium on digging in the street is November 1st. So we are on a very, very tight timeline here, and if we are unable to finish this project, our landlord may actually evict us, because we are way past the lease at this time. We're actually paying double rent right now, in order to stay in that property, whereas we're trying to get into this property as fast as possible.
So if we were to, and I, I understand that, that's, you know, I sympathize with that, and I, so I'm thinking if we do feel that landscaping or something is necessary, maybe we, we require it within a certain amount of time, if we give them a year to get it completed, or, you know, get them moved in, and whatever we may request or require, as long as it's not a safety thing, and we can, and we can wait on it, maybe we can give them that flexibility.
Okay, all right, anything else, Joe?
No.
Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to start my comments by just reassuring the applicant, that I think, I can't speak for everyone up here, but in, in, from where I'm sitting, we are, we want to get this building occupied, we want to get you guys in there. We just want to make sure it's, it's a safe right-of-way there for the cars. So we're only, that's all, the only thing we're, we're looking at, we're not trying to give you a hard time or anything. We empathize with you and your plight, and appreciate that you are taking a tough site, working with it, and putting a lot of money into it, so that doesn't go unnoticed, and that's definitely comes, you know, without, without being noticed. So, my comment was about the door, and now I, it's, that being said, my comment was about the door, and it's very problematic that the door, I was really hoping that the door on the side there in the back would alleviate a lot of the people walking on that, on that short 14-foot right-of-way. If we had that door, then you wouldn't have to go around front, you could just cut in the door and then go in the back. But, but now that you're telling, you're telling us that the second-floor tenant will not have access to the second floor from that door? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Where on the plan is that stairway, because I don't
The stairwell's on the other side of the building.
Whereabouts on the other side?
Uh, it's near the back, actually, on the left side there, there's like a little square right there, right
That's where the stairwell is.
Right to the left, yep, right there.
Okay.
That's actually where that stairwell is.
So, so the plan all along was to have whoever the tenant was walk through the showroom to get to that stairway, so they could access
No, no, the, the front of the building actually has a foyer or a lobby that has a stairwell and an elevator that we are adding to the building for ADA compliance as well. So the front of that building will have a large stairwell as well as an elevator.
I think what we'll have to do is, when you come back to get the upstairs tenant approved, we'll just have to be very careful on who we, we put up there, or, you know, because that's a really tough, tough setup. Are you still planning on putting the door in on the back there for people to access the
The, the door is definitely going in, they've cut that as a new door into the concrete. So that there will be a door there, the question of whether that's a customer entrance or an employee entrance. I, I, I think, I, I think we are open to possibilities there, but it's not an ideal location for a customer to come in, right in the middle of, of where that would be.
For safety's sake, I would hope that it would be customer accessible, because it would definitely help out alleviating that, the scarcity, the scare of that traffic. And you bring up probably one of the worst intersections in the area. The town of Wilmington has been trying to widen this bridge for years. It's a, it's one of the worst problems they have traffic-wise, this is not a good example to bring up.
I think there are, there's our plans in, in five years to actually widen it, too.
They've been talking about it for 20 years.
Yeah, after they last paved it.
Those are my concerns, and, yeah, I really would like to see that door accessible to customers, that would go a long way, at least making me feel better about the safety of that, that right-of-way. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. As, as I'm looking at the memorandum of understanding, that, that concerns me, first of all, with the, the bold, in that no way this is a document to be legally binding, so that, that concerns me with that. So I'm looking at the, that the language here, I'm trying to find the language that says that you have the ability to go through, not only for parking there, but for, for exiting out of your site. Where is that in the MOU?
Uh, if you look under Section 4, it's under the bulleted points, I believe it's the third bullet down, that says, "Allow vehicular egress access through its parking area and driveways." And then the bullet below that is, "Not obstruct or block the adjoining parking areas and leave them open for free access across the property boundaries."
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I, I would be, I think, just like the reg, the other board members here, is concerned about, that, so, I think we're saying, we're getting rid of the two ways, so it's, it's just, we're putting big arrows there, the two ways out, there's no way you can kind of work with that. You've got egress the other way, directing there. We did that with the archer, if you recall, we had them put up the exit sign, although you could go out that way, but it would have been a right turn only, but there was no way to go left, right? So coming out of that parking lot, the archer in back, we put an exit sign there, said, "Exit that way," so people would see that, that particularly people not familiar with the site. So I think that's a, a great solution. Again, Liz, can you point out where that, that, that back door is on, on the left-hand side? The back, on the other side, on the left-hand side, there, there's a, there's two stairwells, so there's, it's the, not that back one there, but the one further up, and that's where the door is?
Right there, that, that is a stairwell that goes up to the second floor, that's more of kind of an emergency exit, I would say.
And, and how far does your showroom go back? Can it have any warehousing?
Uh, just about to that area.
Oh, okay, so here's, here's what, what I'm thinking into other places. If you actually had that door that you got cut, unfortunately, you've already cut it, but you, you, you moved it back, right? Let's say you didn't cut it, but you did. You actually move it back, if, is it parallel to that second, that, that stairway that you have going up? Is it close to there? Because what, where I'm thinking is, you can partition in just a little hallway between, right?
No, but the rest of that area is all in my warehouse, office area, break room, I don't think there's any way we can partition that.
You could just create, you're talking about creating a hallway between the showroom and the office area, correct?
Correct. Yeah, call it, now you might have doors in between, so you can go between the showroom and to your warehouse, but that allows people to come right in from that parking lot, straight through and going up to the second floor. Say, entrance here for second floor.
Yeah, I was thinking about
And then have two, two double doors, one into the showroom, the employees only, that's your door, employees only, and then you, you can cross, across the, across the hallway, and then into your warehouse area. It's a straight shot, so that's what I'm thinking there.
So that way, if I understand you correctly, patrons who are going either upstairs or downstairs could enter through the downstairs, through the back door? The patrons that are going into the showroom would just bang a right, go into the showroom, the other people would go down this little hallway to the stairwell and go up?
Yep. Could you, can you walk, if you go in the back, down the right-hand side to the stairs?
Parallel to the rear wall.
But parallel to the rear wall, that's, that's correct.
Is that a possibility?
You're saying, create some sort of common corridor?
I don't believe it is, I mean, our plan has already been set by the architect, and, and the way that it flows, I, I don't believe that would be a feasible option.
All right, no, just a thought.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think if, if that can't be done, then we go back to what Mike said, it's going to severely limit who can go upstairs.
Yeah.
But, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
I, I just, I'm, I'm familiar with the ability to partition something like that. Again, it's, it's, it doesn't, if everything's structurally, right, it doesn't have to be load-bearing?
No, the, the ceilings are all concrete, there's actually no posts or
So all, all we're talking about is, you know
Two sheets of sheet rock.
Two sheets of sheet rock down across.
We put off as petitions.
Yeah, you could.
Do temporary, you can do temporary ones, yeah, like, I, so, that's all I say there, too. And that's going to make, that's going to be a big deciding factor in my decision here, because there's a lot of safety issues here with, with people kind of going on, up that strip, that would be difficult to support. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Ernie?
I actually have been listening to all the conversation and thinking about it. I'm glad to see that the building, you're trying to reuse an existing building, which has been sitting there for, I don't know how long, Paul, quite a while. And not only that, but you're, you're making it more environmentally sensitive by grassing the right-hand strip, but you're also limiting yourself by grassing the right-hand strip. But you can't do anything unless you grass the right-hand strip. Okay, so, get, that's clear. Now, to the, to the engineer, you say you've already done your stormwater calculations and whatever, based on the grassed area as shown now. Across the back of the building, if you were to put like a three-and-a-half foot wide or a four-foot wide sidewalk, how low would the back wall outside? How would that affect your stormwater calculations? It
It could be, it could be
There's a loading dock there.
Oh.
The loading dock, it says, "Loading dock to be removed."
And reconstructed.
Brand reconstructed, okay, is it a, is it a
It's elevated, two feet.
Okay, we'll make your walk go around the loading, now, that's, I mean, you know, but what I'm trying to do is, is come up with
Sure.
Something that you can do that won't, because number one, I see you're going to be extremely severely limited to who you can put on the second floor. Even just, not even with us, but with anybody. I mean, if they can't walk into the back of the building, they get a parking back and walk down beside the building, it would have to be, I don't know, three guys in a, in a, I, I don't know what, but, you know what I mean? So, so this is, this would, I would think, help you also, if you could figure out a way to do that. And as Bill suggested, you can't steal four feet from the inside of the building against the rear wall? I mean, four feet, five feet, how mu, uh, your architect should be able to adjust that.
So the, the size of the building right now is actually just about the same size of the space that we're in right now. So the displays that we have have to be laid out in certain ways, and in certain spaces that have to be contiguous areas in order to actually display them. So for one, one example is, at one of our vendors, we have a display wall that's 17 feet long and eight feet high, that it has to have the space in a certain way
Okay.
set up. So the way we've configured everything in the interior plan right now, it fits. And we just are able to fit one office, one break room, and then one small storage area and the back warehouse area, as well as the shelving units that we already have. So it has been, pretty much almost every square inch has been spoken for the way that it's been set up. And even then, it's going to be a little bit tight, I believe.
Can you get a smaller display? What kind of display is 17 feet?
It's, uh, it's actually all door hardware, it's from a company called Baldwin. High-end door lock hardware, hinges, cabinet knobs and everything like that. But the, it's, the display was a 14-foot wall of all of the displays, and it's lit and everything like that, so that's actually going to be right around where that other door was that we were adding. Even in that door itself, we had to reconfigure things to fit 36 inches for that door.
So would the board be amenable to speed bumps in that access road as, as a, a measure to make it safer for pedestrians? Or maybe even a, a speed table at the beginning and the, in the end? I mean, would that, would that be a more safe proposal? I mean, people walk in parking lots all the time. I mean, it's
Well, they do, but they don't, they don't walk up against it. If you look at our past history, we will never allow vehicles to be where people are, if you've got a wall on the other side. We've had how many instances of
That makes sense.
People being, without a bollard, without a bollard or some sort of protection, right? So we've had so many instances, unfortunately, of people pinned at that Middlesex Mall, two or three times, people have been
That's head-in parking, right? Yeah.
Or just driving, you know, in the parking lot, they didn't, they weren't, no, it wasn't, it actually wasn't head-in parking. It was just people driving in the parking lot that hit the gas, and, you know, were trying to maneuver the parking lot itself. trying to maneuver the parking lot itself, because there is no head-in parking in that, in that mall, in that direction, yeah.
Okay.
So it's, we've, you know, whenever we've allowed outdoor seating, any of that stuff, we've always required bollards, something to protect. In this case, I would feel much more comfortable if the pedestrians were not against the wall. I mean, someone could have a coffee, spill it and lean over and, you know, drive against the wall, you know. It's just not a good situation if it were maybe something, if the walkway were raised up somehow or something, that...
Even that, the car would jump if, I think it's safer to have it on the other side, so the person who's walking has somewhere to go.
So you couldn't put a curb in?
Well, I'm thinking if there was a curb in a walkway...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because we can't permit what is not possible. We have to work with a situation that the board can stand by and, you know, say, "This is reasonable and safe." And we can't do the impossible, so that's why this is, we're working so hard on this. That was the only thing I could think. You know, if you had a vertical granite curbing or something along there, that the people could walk along, that would at least give you the assurance that most people don't like to draw a curb.
On the safe side, not...
Okay, on the left side, okay, okay.
Yeah, and, you know, if you've got three feet, take six inches of it and put a vertical granite curbing along there, because some of the vertical granite curbing now is fairly high, you know, six inches high or eight inches high. And even I, in my dotage, don't go over things like that. So I think, you know, that would make it safer for somebody to walk along.
Or you just have to hit the gas extra hard to get over it.
All right. Ernie, did you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Consider that. I know it would be expensive to do that.
Okay, I have a few comments. We all want to see you make this work. We really do. And I think we can. I'm prepared to vote in favor of this under the following conditions, and the rest of my board members can weigh in. The back door needs to be marked as a customer entrance. It should not look like a back door or a service door, because we want to encourage as many people as possible to enter that way. The fewer people that we have walking down that drive aisle, the better. I want to see signage directing cars out the back way. Doesn't have to be a "Do not enter" sign, but it should strongly encourage with exit signs and arrows, encourage people to go the other way. I think the walkway should be on the left side with curbing, so that pedestrians have somewhere to go if a car comes and is not paying, the driver is not paying good attention. I think you should give consideration to the internal walkway, because I think it will give you more flexibility with your tenant upstairs. And I'm not telling you that you have to do it, I just encourage you to think it through, and maybe it means you have a smaller office or whatever, you can figure out whether or not you can make that work, because if you can't make that work, when you come back to us for a second tenant, that's going to be very difficult. Then I wanted to talk a little bit more about the landscaping. Staff had suggested there may be room for a small bump out of landscaping to the left of your door. I'd like to see that. I'd also like to see landscaping, I mentioned it in the meeting that you were here last, on the right side of your property in front of the white fence where the double telephone pole is, which by the way, we're going to see if we can get ahold of people to fix that for you. I don't know how successful it will be, but we're going to try, because that's unsightly and it's not your fault. If we could get that landscaped there as well, to separate the two pieces of property, I think that would be great. I'd also like to see something other than hostas in that front bed in front of your building. I understand you don't want anything of great height, because you don't want to block the beautiful things that you're selling. But something with some variety of height and some color would be greatly appreciated. I think hostas, I agree, they're extremely durable, they're really hard to kill, they're one of the few things I have in my yard, because I do not have a green thumb and they're hard to kill, but they're kind of boring, too. And I'd like to see a little bit more interest and color there, if possible. And if you don't want to do actual bushes and trees, you can do annuals and put annual color in there, which would be, would help and make your building look better, too. So that's what I'm looking for. There is a gentleman in the back that's raised his hand. Would you like to speak on this? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Madam Chair, when he's coming up, just a question. If there's a tenant for the upstairs, do they have to come before us?
Yep.
We're conditioned, I think we're going to...
You can either sit or use the microphone.
Let me just clarify what Member Gaffney said. So they have their parking calculation, assuming it's office upstairs, so it, what, how the condition reads is, we find that this ratio works. If it's something other than the office ratio that is, requires additional parking, then they need to come back. But as I'm hearing here, it sounds as if their concerns enough exist that they should be consulting, you know, at least the planning department on their second tenant, if not going, but come, definitely coming back to this board for a second tenant.
I would agree, thank you.
I mean, I know, they want to get in the building and they want to start operating their business. And they even said, "We hope we're so successful, we can also be on the second floor." We hope that is true, and then we don't have to worry about this other second tenant and how they get there and what we're doing. So, you know, I think we want to make this work, so you guys can get up and running. But as you're hearing, there is concern over kind of what, what's the next, what happens next. So we can condition it such that, you know, there's that kind of two, two rounds of check of, you know, whatever happens, you have to go through our department just to review it and also, and then we can make, the chairman can make the call if they need to come back more formally with the board.
Right. And on the landscaping, I would be very comfortable with putting a date on it, as Member Empena said, it doesn't have to be done before you move in, because I know you're under type-time constraints. If you do that in the spring, I'm fine with that. We just want to have it in the plan for the future. I'm sorry, thank you for your patience.
You can take it out.
Liz, can you help him with that, please?
Hi, my name's John, I work at 171, Bedford Street, Doyle Lake Home. So Ken, I know Ken, through dealing with him, an architect and a builder, and working with Mac Hardware Design, they're, I just want to speak in favor of their project as far as embellishing the area and bring, kind of configuring the area, bringing the business in the area. They have, you know, kind of underwent a painting, the asbestos, from my understanding, and putting a disallow array. So also, that's a resident of Burlington, has been highly favored the project. As far as the memorandum of understanding, it's basically non-binding legal document, because, you know, we want to work together, but we also don't want to tie our hands, you know, twenty or thirty years down the line. You know, we plan on developing these properties and staying here and being in Burlington community, but that's why it's a non-binding document. But we kind of propose, I guess, kind of the hardship that Ken has, that the structure of his roof is kind of like a parking lot garage, it's a T-shaped structural beam, so it'd be very hard to kind of cut anything into it to put in a staircase on that side. So that's kind of one of the hardships that they have. And we're talking with Kristen in our meeting the other day, because we had this memorandum, this agreement, you know, she suggested, or we were talking about, you know, it would still be good to keep that open as two-way traffic for them, so that they're not kind of inhibited in any way if down the line, either one of us do something wrong. But I agree with Mr. Empena, you know, that's probably a good suggestion, with that, I can't speak for Ken or Chris, but his concern is probably putting that, that kind of access way on the left for a walkway. And it could be pavers, which are kind of pervious, but also have bar controllers in it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Sorry. So you're 171, and it says on the memorandum of understanding, you're going to renovate that as well?
Yes.
So you, do you plan to renovate that as kind of a single-tenant facility? Are you going to try and split that up?
Wanted to sit together, you know, leave it asking, so that...
Sure.
So basically, you know, this is now taken up due to conservation.
Right.
And so, because we know each other, we talked about wanting to work together, and right now, this is, I don't know what type of easement this is, but you can see the paving delineation. This is kind of older paving, this is more paving for this building here. There's some type of easement in the middle, where this building and our building uses this right-of-way as a two-way. So with our agreement here, this memorandum, Mac Design and Hardware would be able to replace it through here. And I also have an ingress and egress here, which we can basically come in here and then egress here, and they can also egress here or come in here. Depending on my tenant, you know, will depend on what happens here with that ingress and egress. I'd like to just keep it open. But, you know, I've had a daycare wanting to come in there, but daycare only wants to take the first floor, and I told them they can't take the first floor, they would have to take the whole building, because they would need a fifteen-square square foot playground there. So that's probably not intended by entertainment, so. But with our agreement and this memorandum, I'd be helping out Chris and Ken with their, you know, exiting and ingress, which is a lot more convenient, because I don't know what that distance is, but it's more like twenty feet across with the bar.
So is that, just a quick question, because you had said that there's some sort of an easement there, so is that actually owned to the left of your building, that one you're talking about there? Is, yeah, is that, do you have an easement there, or is that, or is that something?
It's an uneven, I think, to the river.
Oh, maybe.
I don't know for sure, but I think it probably is.
Do you know who it's owned by? Who the underlying land is owned by?
We own this property and nobody owns this property, but I think...
But that piece right there?
I dream of an easement of the town.
Right, but it's an easement, but somebody must own the land.
Well, we own the land.
You own the land?
Yeah.
Not the plaza next to you?
Well, he's saying where the pavement changes color, that's where the property lies.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that the pavement, that the dark pavement looks like it's, it's more consistent with the color of the plaza, not your color.
Yeah, it's dark pavement.
Yeah.
It's consistent with the whole area.
Right, so is that...
We own from here over.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you...
It's hard to see, because it's kind of skewed on an angle, it's like planned.
Right, so the actual...
It's in the middle of the two buildings.
So the actual access point, you don't own?
Yes.
Yes, you do, yes, you don't.
Can you blow that up a little bit?
Just zoom in a little?
That, that...
It's hard to see here, but this is an equal distance, and this is...
Oops. There you go.
This is an equal distance.
Okay, so here you go, right here.
Okay, now, okay.
So, so, so point out...
Even in the middle, okay.
Well, so, so who owns what here?
He owns to the right, he owns to the middle.
You own to where that, it looks like there's a line there, right?
Is that vehicle on your property?
No. So it, so your piece of it doesn't even look like it's wide enough for a vehicle, is it, or?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Until you get to the sidewalk.
That's what parking spaces is, eight feet.
Yeah.
There, you probably have another twelve feet.
Then you got to jump the sidewalk.
Because it looks like there's a line going down the middle of it, that, is that what delineates your land from their land?
With the telephone.
Yes. I don't think that's the exact line, it has to be, you know, approximately that is what the line is.
Okay.
I think there's five feet, whatever that dream of easement is in Burlington, or whatever type of easement is, that could be five feet, maybe five feet or...
Right. I'm more concerned about the fact that you have, they have a memorandum with you, but not with the plaza, right? So technically, the plaza could say, "We're not letting you, we're not going to let you use that," right?
Well, they can use, they can use his land. How many feet did you say out from the building to your...
I'm trying to figure out if, worst-case scenario, if this, because it looks like even yours, you know, there's a telephone pole in the way of where yours is. I mean, this side of it wouldn't be an issue, but the other, this side...
I have access here because it's my land, so I could, based on the memorandum, given the right to use that capacity.
How far out from the building do you own on that side?
I don't know what the exact...
Let's see.
Is that enough for a right-of-way?
Liz, could you move to the left side of that one again, and show us from the street view? Because it looks like you are, see, your piece, the pole cuts into yours somewhat. If that, if that pavement, where it looks like it comes together, is where it actually comes together, you, you don't even have access from your, from the land that you own on that side.
I thought you said you owned out twelve feet from the building.
I don't know what the exact measurement is, but I have to look at this like that.
Okay, that's important to know.
If you look from the bird's eye view again?
Doesn't make any difference. If you don't own the land, you know, we can't...
If you own twelve feet, if you own twelve feet, and the middle of that twelve feet is a telephone pole.
Basically, that parking spot is probably eight feet from there.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
And then it's over near to that building, across, something in color.
Well, I'm just wondering if the color of the pavement is where the line is. If it is, then that telephone pole would prevent you from even...
If the neighbor said you can't traverse here, then you can't get out, because the pole is there.
I mean, that doesn't prevent them from using your other side.
Yes.
You know, they could use your other side if, you know...
I'm sure, you know, I'm sure you did the funerals, they drove back there, right?
I haven't talked to the other neighbor, but I guess it just had been purchased within the last year or so.
Sorry, I don't want to talk over you.
But when the Doyle Lake Funeral Home was originally built...
Right.
It was built with an agreement with that neighbor for using their...
Again, that, there may be an agreement that you can use it for your purposes, but that doesn't mean you can grant it to somebody else.
Right, yes.
So I don't, you know, again, I don't know if, but, I mean, the other side, you could certainly let them anyway, if worse came to worse, and, you know, there's obviously a drive aisle there as well, to the right side, right, that you, that fits traffic, that will allow traffic.
It doesn't allow two vehicles to pass, though.
No, it doesn't, but it can allow...
They're in the same spot.
It can allow an out, and, and your traffic...
You go in on the hardwood, you come out on the hardwood.
And you can, for your purposes, can use both sides, if you have an agreement with your neighbor. So if, if things got a little contentious, that there is a way to do it still with your access, with your access.
So let me ask my question, maybe a different way. So the, you're renovating the funeral home right now, have you renovated it, or you're currently in the process of it?
No, I'm not in the current process.
Okay. But your intent is...
I have some planning work.
Right. Okay, so is your, is your thought to cut it up for different tenants? Doesn't sound like, because you said the daycare only wanted one level, but you're going to want someone for having the whole building?
Yeah, it would either be kind of lawyer offices, doctor offices, like small locker, medical use for the daycare, but unless the daycare would take the whole building. But again, the playground is kind of limited, so you might not end up going with them.
So you may split it up, you're saying, into docs' offices and...
It may be split up. We've been...
The way the building works is it's twenty-five hundred square feet first floor, twenty-five hundred square feet second floor, and a thousand square foot third level, has a twenty-person elevator, and has rear, rear space and exit square feet, but...
Okay, we've been over an hour on this, so let's not get into his property yet, because you're not before us.
The only reason why you ask is to kind of understand what...
I understand.
Because it works with this one.
They've got an agreement that they can go out that way, and that's important for this site.
Can I ask one more question, and it's going to be relation to the property, because I have to, because I recall back a while ago, and I was hoping he was going to stay up to answer the question, but was it, did, that property came before us a while ago for residential condos. Was that you that brought it?
Yes.
It was. Is that still a desire? Is that still a desire?
It was, um, but based on, you know, coming in front of this board, uh...
Can't park it.
Mr. Raymond said that, uh, can't do, can't grant spot zoning just for that parcel.
Yes, it was, right.
So, I was hoping that in this past...
Right.
Year and a half or so, that we've been working on a master plan, and the town was hoping that that would get re-sold eventually, but...
The only reason why I ask is because now, you know, we have the possibility of dealing with, we've got some problem sites down there, and I know we don't have the ability to grant that, but, you know, that may be a use that, you know, complements this use if the whole site were considered one. And as I said, we don't have the ability to do that, but town meeting does. If we were to support a use like that, you know, maybe that would be a bigger plan, you know, to fix the problem, you know, and...
You'd make it a PDD?
No.
Right, but what we have before us tonight, I think we need to make a decision on without knowing what you're going to do on your property. We're not gonna come to any agreement about that tonight.
No, but I think it would be just a good opportunity to put the idea out that maybe this is something that get, gets looked at as a bigger picture, you know, in the future.
In the future, yes.
Ernie, what's the...
Yes.
Can I, uh, make a semi-motion on your, or, or, or make a suggestion?
Yes, Ernie.
You had a suggestion that you would be willing to vote if there was a defined walkway for that. That's only about seventy-five feet, by the way.
You mean on...
That's, that would be narrow.
The defined walkway on the left.
On the, on the left away from the building. How about if it was a raised concrete walkway?
I would be fine with that.
That was, yeah.
Can I speak to that, please?
Sure.
So, I have an issue with that, with truck movements.
Well...
So, that is an access for delivery trucks for the client into the building.
Right, right.
So, a striped passageway is fine, as long as it's at grade. If we put a curb in there, and now we have a ten, now technically, the truck can make it through a ten-foot-wide passageway. But now we're up against the building, and it's gonna limit the movement of the truck. We really need that extra three and a half feet, so the truck can get away from the building to make its turning movement in the back.
What if there's a person there?
No.
What if there's a person there when the truck comes?
Then the truck waits for the person to complete their passage, and they go through. I mean, what, what if there's a person walking down the sidewalk, and yet the truck turns in? They have to wait for the person passing.
Trucks don't drive up on the sidewalk.
Oh, really?
All the time.
They do?
They do all the time.
Well, they're not supposed to.
They do. Some sidewalks are made to hold the trucks going around corners. It's called a multiple sidewalk.
But where's the turning movement that you're talking about, in the front or the back?
So, I mean, the truck has to come down the building and turn in the back, so it can access the loading dock in the back. So, I, I don't wanna hinder the truck turning movements by limiting the width.
Well, he's gonna, he's gonna turn to the left and then back into the loading dock. Because he's never gonna turn to the right, he hasn't got any room.
Right.
So, he has to turn to the left. He has plenty of room to turn to the left.
So, he's gonna go out the same way he came in?
Correct.
Well, or he can go out the other way.
The back way.
Yeah.
Look.
It would be better, if I was driving the truck, I'd go out the other way, because it's...
I think what we've made really clear, our biggest concern is about safety. And I think if you want a decision tonight, you're gonna agree to put in a safe walkway on the left with a curb. Otherwise, I think we're gonna have to continue this and, and try and work, we, we can meet in between and, and come back to the next meeting. That's my feeling, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
It sounds like, from what the, what the gentleman is saying, that if we continue it, that he may be in peril of losing...
Right, and we don't wanna continue it, but I think this is possible. It's not ideal, I know it's not ideal, because the site is very difficult, it's not your fault. But if the trucks can get in, it may not be their ideal, and maybe it will be a little challenging for them, but we need to make sure that people walking are safe.
Well, if they have, again, they're, they wanna, um, they wanna occupy the first floor. They hopefully are getting the message that you want commercial, um, customer entrance on the back for the first floor.
Right, that's gonna be a condition.
Therefore, if the customer entrance can be at the back at the main parking lot, there shouldn't be really anyone walking along the front.
That's correct.
When they, when they, if, if they are not gonna take over the second floor, and they cannot find internally a way to get to the stair, stairs in the front, then, yes, they will have a pedestrian population that will be in that area, that I, I completely agree need to some protection. So, you know, if they said, no, we're not gonna make it a customer entrance, I think we should be on the front end looking at safety measures. But if they're okay with making a customer entrance at the back parking lot, I think we can wrap...
Sure.
Because you've already said, if we wanna see what's going on on the second floor before it happens, we can wrap that piece of it into that...
I'm, I'm fine with that.
If, if that helps them get moving.
And that customer door has to be clearly, that customers in that back parking lot need to know clearly that this is the door I'm supposed to go in.
Yeah, just, and no pedestrian access.
If you think this is something, will you come to us for the customer upstairs?
Okay. Do you have all of what we've said down? Do you have any questions? Because I think we need to wrap this up, we've been going quite a while.
Can we just, uh, lay out what we're doing?
What, okay, what the conditions are?
Yeah.
Okay. Right now, okay, we're gonna have a conditional landscaping in the front. A small landscaping bump out on the left, and we're gonna put some landscaping in front of the white fence on the right. A tree would be nice. We're gonna have the back parking lot clearly marked to encourage everyone to exit out the back way. We won't have a do not enter, but it will be very clearly marked that people are supposed to exit out the back. There will be a back entrance that is clearly a customer entrance, that will encourage customers to not walk down that walkway and to go in the front.
I would also like to add a sign in that alleyway that says no pedestrian access? Because nobody has to really walk there.
Are you gonna have, um...
They're either going in the front door, or they're going in the customer...
They're gonna park in the front and go in the front, or they're gonna park in the back and go in the back? I'm okay with that.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have a, uh, arrow showing...
Directing people where to go.
Going, going back.
And then we're gonna condition it such that if any tenant other than you, if you expand to the front, to the top, no, no questions. If anyone other than you is occupying that top floor, you need to come back to us, and we're gonna revisit the issue of the safe walkway on the left. Anyone have any other questions?
I could vote for that.
Okay. All right.
Motion made.
No, we've got a closed public hearing.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak on this matter? No, thank you. All right.
Okay, closed public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
By opposed, six, zero.
All right. So, motion to, let's see where that is.
Approve as stated by the chair.
Motion to approve the request of one seventy-five Beaufort Street LLC applicant. Approval of site plan, application for property located at one seventy-five Beaufort Street to permit the renovation of existing site, including exterior refurbishing, relocation of the loading dock, repaving, associated site improvements as reflected on the site plan entitled Mac Design Hardware, one seventy-five Beaufort Street, prepared by Bayside Engineering, dated July sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, revised October eleventh, nineteenth, consisting one sheet site plan. The project is subjected to the following terms, provisions, and conditions as amended. Second.
Quick question. We have all the normal lighting and no, no temporary signage stuff in here, right? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? By opposed, six, zero.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you.
Yes.
All right.
Uh, motion to take, item, I lost it.
We're on page nine.
There we go. Motion to take items seven B, seven C, and seven D together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
By opposed, six, zero. Item seven B is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section six point one point one point one, alteration of a non-conforming use of the zoning bylaws. One eighteen Cambridge Street Henley Enterprises is the applicant. Item seven C is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section six point one point two point two, non-conforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaw, one eighteen Cambridge Street Henley Enterprises is the applicant. And item seven D is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, one eighteen Cambridge Street Henley Enterprises Incorporated is the applicant. Hello and welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Thomas Murphy for the applicant. With me is Randy Cazara in the, uh, the Enterprises and, uh, the Henley Enterprises, uh, media. As you recall, we were here a couple of weeks ago, uh, guiding property at one eighteen Cambridge Street, trust from high school, belonging to gas station site. We're looking to construct, um, a Valvoline instant change station there. They're asked to add some additional landscaping to the plan, which Mr. Pesci did, he'll be happy to go over that with you, so we agreed we'd like him to. You asked us to make some inquiries with the neighborhood property, uh, with interest in extending the sidewalk.
Thank you.
I did have occasion to speak to, um, Kelly, uh, this afternoon. He indicated to me that he didn't think that that's something that he would really be interested in, because, uh, his tenant that's there, the Phillips Gas, last company, everyone wouldn't have access to the property, so... I think those are the points that you have to discuss. Questions, and like I said, Ed would be happy to go over the landscaping plan, uh, if there are questions on that.
Let's do that, I'd like to see the landscape plan.
Hi, everyone. For the record, I'm Ed Pesci of Pesci Engineering, and thank you for entertaining my protege, Brian Wallace, at the last meeting I was visiting my daughter and grandchildren in California when we were all doing this, the last meeting. We were asked specifically to add some landscaping along the one eighteen frontage, the three A frontage. And I'll, I'll put this pointer, I'll just point this out, everyone. I, I did have occasion to watch the, uh, the closed circuit TV recording of the meeting, and essentially, it is this area that you said specifically, hey, look, why don't you just take this and move it over here? So, if you remember, we had a landscape aisle in here, and a landscape aisle with a tree over here, and all we did was extend it, we actually added a little bit more landscaping along the frontage, along, um, uh, Cambridge Street as requested. The work that, that, that Henley Enterprises had, does is, is quite extensive with regard to landscaping. They really care about the look of their building. Folks, this is my thirteenth Valvoline instant oil change with them in, in eastern Massachusetts. So, I've done a lot of work with this company over the last ten years, fourteen years. And, um, we also brought with us today, and I think we're provided to you some photo, a photo, a, a copy of the rendering that I show mounted here, and if I may, I'm just gonna flip this around. Also, a, a rendering of the elevations of the building.
Use the microphone.
Does this work?
Uh, check.
Could you help me with that, Liz?
Here we go. I have a, I have a red light. So, I, I brought with me also, and you have smaller versions of this, this is the elevations, the architectural elevations, the colored architectural elevations of the building. So, I thought it was important for you to see the kind of brick facade, clean, finished look that this will be, and I think you have a photo of the site in Vinin Square in Salem, which was our last Valvoline, we just did last year over here, and it's virtually identical to what we're proposing, uh, here at, um, one eighteen Cambridge Street.
May I ask, it says, uh, proposed concrete sidewalk, I assume that's vertical granite? Thank you.
So, it's vertical granite. Just so you know, we, we actually changed the design for the entire site is vertical granite curb. Interior curb is not Cape Cod berm anymore, it's now vertical granite. The interior curb here and all the perimeter curb. The perimeter curb over here along three A would have to be vertical granite to comply with the state Mass DOT requirement.
Well...
Thank you.
You've found out that we like vertical granite curbing, so that's good.
Apparently, yes.
Um, I'm gonna ask staff to weigh in, because I know they had some suggestions for, um, a change to the sidewalk configuration, so I'd like to get to that first.
So, let me just back up a little bit. So, this site is, uh, non-conforming use. So, what's in front of you is a site plan, as well as a special permit for an alteration, an expansion of the non-conforming use. With that comes with, you know, you, you need to make a finding that it's not significantly, substantially more detrimental than the existing use. They have introduced, and that's what I was confirming with them when I was talking to them before the meeting started, drainage and stormwater, um, uh, stormwater utilities to improve the site and runoff. The site does have an active, or it passed contamination status, I believe, that it's still active, so we are unable to do infiltration on the site. And I just was checking with them to make sure that there wasn't any additional changes from the plan we had from conservation, but conservation, um, did push them, um, to additional pretreatment. Um, there is a storm scepter on site, so I'm comfortable with, um, the stormwater situation. So, the corner, as I mentioned at the last meeting, to define the corner, bring the sidewalk along Edbridge Road across the front. We had mentioned at the last meeting that we were hoping to continue the sidewalk to link with the, the concrete sidewalk that's further down the road. And I would still suggest that. I also spoke with the RJ Kelly Company this morning, um, and they see, they, I had a little bit of a different answer. So long as they were consulted, um, about the curb cut that would be in front of their property, because their property is a smaller property, they do need more maneuvering, or if it's not a typical curb cut, it probably will be, it probably will be substantial. And just to make sure, so that's actually how we conditioned it, that any curb cut is to be approved by me and them in front of that site, to extend it just a little bit further. Then the landscape, oh, the, with that sidewalk, um, one of the things that we've been talking about quite a bit, and, um, the last time we talked about it was when we approved the housing project, the forty B project on Corporate Drive. Cambridge Street is variable width and along, as we all know, the age old problem of is it two, is it four? And in this location, where the edge of pavement is and where the sidewalk is, what we wanna suggest, and they need to go to DOT to get the, the permit anyway, is to put the sidewalk closer to the property line. So, if they were doing widening in this location, they wouldn't need to rebuild the sidewalk. We've heard in the past that DOT likes the sidewalk right at the, right at the, um, the curb line. How, but, you know, but we've also, just like we did with, um, three twenty-eight, three thirty Cambridge Street, we said, okay, well, we want to try to propose a grass strip, actually, as they already have proposed, and see what happens. And I don't have the answer to that question yet, but, um, anyway, so that would require them to push some of the landscaping back slightly that they have proposed. They do have the landscaping, unless it's changed correctly, if I'm wrong, it's, um, inkberry and rhododendrons, for the most part, and along the front of the site. Oh, this is the old one.
This is the old one.
You're looking at, you have a new one, that has a lot more plantings. One of the things, you know, I know they wanna have visibility of signage, but we, we just wanted to add that we just wanna diversify the heights a little bit along the front of that vegetation, so it's not just, like, low, lower, um, lower plantings. And then the last piece of it was, can you go back to the, the, um, the street view? There's a really big tree right there that I know, I've heard some people talk about, and wanted to just throw it out to the board for discussion, um, as to, you know, and, and talk with the applicant about citing and, and other things, because you have, traditionally, if there's substantial vegetation and mature trees, try to do what we can to, to preserve them. So, um, that's all I have, I, um, I think. We do have to make the finding, the section six finding, the special permit, so that's it.
All right, thank you. Ernie, do you wanna start us off?
Well, it, it, it's gonna be more aesthetically pleasing than what's there now. We're gonna get a sidewalk across the front. But we have to say it's not substantially more, uh, non-conforming than what's there now. I think with the improvements in landscaping and whatever, um, in the sidewalk, and the, um, the agreement to work with, uh, RJ Kelly next door, extended, I, I, I think it's going to be... to work with RJ Kelly next door, extended, I think it's going to be a better project than what's there now. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Ernie.
Can I interrupt really quickly?
Yes.
There was discussion at the, I just forgot about this, there was discussion at the beginning of the last meeting about the use and the use being specific to Valvoline in terms of it's not, right now, there's two service bays for just general auto body and, or auto, auto repair. And they're adding an additional bay and a question came up, and, oh, it's in the special permit, as to if, should we be limiting it to such uses that because of the trip generation and other things, because they're this limited use, not general auto body, you know, that makes a difference and potential difference. So I had a condition that was drafted that kind of just said, the approval is to allow for the following uses on the property and not allow for full service garage, which would be an amendment or a new special permit. So what I wanted to ask the applicant is to specify a little bit more in detail of kind of the, this isn't full service, but what is it that, and we can also clarify this after the meeting, just at this meeting, I just want to make sure you guys were all knew what we, what we're approving here. So if the applicant from Valvoline can talk a little bit more about the specific uses at the site, that would be great.
Right. So I'm Randy Kazazian, I'm the Vice President of Real Estate Family Enterprises. Primarily, we do oil changes and other fluid exchanges, so those would be coolant as well as transmissions, transaxles in certain vehicles. We also do wipers. We do a safety check that involves light bulbs and the changing of light bulbs. We do assortment of filters, cabin filters, air filters, things of that nature. We do tire rotations. That's probably the, and that's typically for our fleet customers that demand that rotation. But we don't do any traditional mechanical work. You know, we, we wouldn't remove valve covers or spark plugs or anything of that nature.
No brakes, no mufflers.
No brakes. We don't even touch the brake fluid for liability reasons.
No batteries.
We do, we do do batteries because they're, they're easily installed and we have an agreement with Interstate.
Right there. Okay. So what I'd like to, so there is, in the application, there is this listing. One of the major things about this is traditional auto body has, you know, you need storage for vehicles, people drop off, they stay for a couple of days. They don't have a lot of parking on the site, which for their use, we'll see, it will work fine. I mean, they, you don't even get out of your car to go into these uses. But if it did convert to general auto body and people dropped off their cars and it'd quickly overburden the site. So, so what I'd like to do is highlight the application material and say, you know, we're approving these, the things limited to this. I can work with the applicant before we finalize it, just to make sure that this is comprehensive enough to cover what you're doing.
So one of the things I discussed at the last meeting is we're looking at high-speed charging of electric cars and hybrids, so, but I certainly work with you outside the meeting.
Okay. So I, but I just, meaning I just wanted to bring it up here that, you know, we're approving a limited auto repair type use at this site and therefore it works because that it's this and the parking, that it's limited to this and the parking works because of that. So, and that all needs to kind of go into the decision, so.
May I ask a question in that context?
Sure.
Do you ever, like, when I take my car somewhere, you know, there's, they have transport and take me home and so forth, do people ever leave their car and you transport them somewhere and they come back and pick it up later?
No, sir. Our model is for you to stay in the car.
Okay, thank you. That was just my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the only comment on it, and I appreciate the landscaping being added to Cambridge Street, really to soften up the front there, was the comment on moving the sidewalk back off of Cambridge Street. That to me would kind of not help the situation and kind of infer that it is a two, a two-car and two-car going north and south versus keeping it right to the edge of, to the, to the street where it should be and then if some later point you're going to move it out. But I would, I would absolutely want to keep that right to the street.
I'm suggesting, I'm not suggesting the curb line change, I'm just suggesting moving the actual sidewalk. So there'd be more of a green strip between.
So more green strip there then.
The curve and the sidewalk.
So then do we lose any of the landscaping?
I would recommend pushing it closer to the building.
Moving it backward, we don't lose any of it.
For the most part, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Mike?
Nothing for me, Madam Chair. All looks good.
Joe?
So I'm just wondering a couple of things that, I was hoping to get some trees in the front area, but it looks like you don't, you don't have anything that's higher than a rhododendron, is that?
We have two trees planned on the, on that side, plus we also have trees that were asked for by staff to put against the back fence.
Yeah.
So we now have trees in the back as well.
I mean, in the front.
Right. So we, we don't tend to try to put a lot of trees in the front, so there's one on each side of the entrance.
Yep.
Okay? So if you see, there's a balsam fir on each side of the entrance.
Yep.
And again, it's evergreen, so it stays green all year round.
Yep.
And we tend to not put lots of trees, certainly at the, on the exit side, to prevent sight distance issues. So we want safe viewing at the turning radiuses and, and points of turns.
Right.
When we're exiting the site. So that's the primary reason that the big fir tree that's there is coming down, was proposed to come down, and that other staff, town staff agreed with that.
Town staff agreed with the tree coming down?
Correct. So we went and explained that to them and there was no issue with that.
Who's town staff?
The town, we had a town staff meeting in August with all the departments.
They had a development coordination meeting in August.
Sorry.
I'd like to see that, that tree preserved, that big tree. And I understand that it needs trimming. It definitely needs trimming, especially on the bottom part of it.
Can you bring that up?
Yeah. But it's, it's, when you step back, it's really the only tree of any height along that stretch of roadway. I'd really hate to lose it. And we talked a lot about whether or not that would obstruct a view of your tower and your sign, but given the placement of the building and the placement of the tree and the people that are going to be looking at that sign, they're actually going to be looking at it from the other side of Cambridge Street heading south, right? And so it, I don't think it would obstruct the view of your sign from the tower. And I would even be willing to say that if after building you found that the tree was obscuring the view of your tower, you could come back and we revisit the issue and let you take it down perhaps and replace it with other smaller trees that are less likely to obstruct views, things like ornamental pear trees or something like that. But I would like to try to save that tree if we can.
The only thing that I would say in our environmental consultant isn't here tonight, we are doing a massive amount of excavation on the site and we're prepared to remove a thousand tons of soil that's impacted on the site. My fear is where, when we take the service station down, we have to do some excavation for the, the old reserves for the lifts in the store. And our expectation is there'll be some impacted soil that has to be removed. So by the time we do all that, I, I fear that the root system of that tree is likely to be damaged as a result of the extensive amount. So perhaps we should talk about other specimens of trees that we could add back because I, I think that's, and I'm, I'm a little leery that my site contractor, despite that I'll ask him to wrap the tree and do all that, that somehow it won't get hit by a piece of equipment or something else.
I understand. I, I can see what the rest of the board thinks. Perhaps we could trade off by having you plant additional trees along the front, sort of like a row of, of trees that would not obscure your building, but I hate to see that tree go.
In the event that.
In the event that it is damaged. We, we'd like you to try to save it. If it can't be saved and it has to come down, I would suggest, you know, a, a row of, you know, maybe four or five ornamental pear trees in the front that would replace that one larger tree.
Yeah, it's in that direction.
And those trees, they, they tend to grow narrow and not too tall, so they don't usually obscure your building or your signage.
I'm not, I, I'm not very good at landscape stuff. I apologize.
They're kind of tall, they're kind of narrow trees. They don't get real wide.
Which one? Yeah, they use them in like town centers a lot because they don't, they don't block signs, they kind of stay fairly trim and, you know.
They're nice roadway trees.
Neat looking.
Do you know where that tree is on the plan?
So through you, Madam Chair, this way you just explain. So first of all, the tree is here on your, on your landscape plan, you all have the copy of this.
Yes.
And it would be sitting right here in front of the, in front of the tower.
But that doesn't make sense. If you look at, right, but if.
If we were to have to remove it, let's just say.
If we were to have to remove it, let's just say for argument's sake that that would happen, I, I wouldn't want to be planting trees any, any further forward, from here to here and any further forward than there, like right in the center of the tower, so that the trees you're talking about, I already have trees here, there would be no problem putting in two more ornamental trees along Cambridge Street.
Trees in that stretch though, except for the two balsam, or, sorry.
That's correct. So I, would be no problem putting a couple more trees in here. I mean, we'd have to put them pretty close together if you wanted five or four.
You can go further if you're talking about the kind of trees I'm talking about that would not obscure, it wouldn't grow as tall as your signage or that tall.
Correct. No, I understand. I understand completely. But I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to have them obstruct the view.
Oh, the, the sightlines, okay.
Yeah, so I wouldn't want to put them over here in the corner.
No, you could put them back.
That's precisely why there's no trees.
Right, right. I understand that.
So from here over, we would, we could put.
Right. And then back where the other tree is now, there could be trees.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Back where the big tree is now, you could, if that tree were lost, you could put some smaller trees in that area.
So we wouldn't want to put a tree anywhere in this area as you pull out, you want to be able to see people coming in this direction. So you don't want to, you don't want, you don't want to have any obstruction or cars entering this road.
Good, Madam Chair, could I interject for a minute?
Yes.
If, I'm getting a better understanding of what you were initially driving at, so we would like to save the tree.
Yes.
We have to trim the tree up anyway, which is probably going to allow for visibility.
Yes.
So perhaps that's what we should try to do and in the instance that we lose the tree, that we try to plant some tree that's in keeping with your suggestions.
Trees, yes.
Yeah, trees, excuse me.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Good.
And tighten them around the corner or something.
That's fine. Yes. We don't want them to obstruct sightlines, absolutely.
And then the only other comment I heard, which I, I understand that this thing keeps going off, so batteries must be dying.
The only other comment I heard about trying to move the sidewalk further away towards the property line, we, we have to understand that I don't control what mass DOT is going to tell me what to do. So whatever condition you want to put in, we'll be happy to work with you and work with staff, but it has to be subject to mass DOT approval.
We understand. We have a condition in other instances that, sorry. We recommend that you submit this and if they say they'd rather it somewhere else, we understand.
Right.
I'm sorry, Joe, I interrupted you.
No, no, it's all right. And thank you.
Yes.
That's very, appreciate the fact that you're trying to accommodate. I just had a couple of things that I, and again, it's, I know it's not the downtown overlay, so it's, it's not necessarily in keeping with, but what we've tried to do along, you know, as you approach the center of town, is we're trying to have some antique lanterns along the walkway, so spaced out, I don't know what, 20 feet apart, you know, whatever the distance on, you know, maybe that would be something you could put in there. And I noticed on your, your lighting up above, you have gooseneck lighting over the signs.
That, that was a requirement of the town of Salem specifically. So we have, our, our signs are typically internally lit LED signs. We haven't applied for a sign permit yet. We'd, we'd have to obviously approach the town about that, so I'm not sure what.
So I was hoping that we would be able to do the same thing, have some gooseneck lighting on your sign.
Looks nice.
Because that's what we have in the downtown center. And I noticed you have it here. And then there was lighting, I guess there's some lighting in other aspects, other parts of the building. I was hoping that, you know, if you had gooseneck, we could do black gooseneck lighting on the signs and then on the other locations in the building, do the same thing. And one other thing that I'd like to throw in, and again, I'm not saying it's mandatory, necessary, just asking that maybe a, a black awning over the doorway would add another design feature to it. It's, these are some of the features that we have as you go a little bit further down and start to approach the center, and this would be an approach to that. And it would be in line with the way we're doing things further, further on 3A, closer to the center. And they're, they're minor things, so I don't know if it's, you know, actually, an awning would be helpful for the, I assume this door that we're going to be looking at, this is, this door is going to be facing Edwards.
Correct.
Right, yeah. And that's, that would be the main entrance.
Technically, yes. Customers enter through the bays in their cars, so.
So they, so they, so they would go through, so why, like, just a question actually, so they would be through the building and done by the time they would even be able to enter that door? How does that work?
We, we encourage you to stay in your car, but there are instances, so that, that entryway there acts as the front of the building. There's just a very small area and it allows our customers access to the bathrooms if they needed it.
Okay, so you're basically saying that you're, they're going to drive their own car into the bay.
That's correct.
And then if they want to go out, then they just continue to walk through the bay and then leave the car and.
They would be, because of the open pits, we'd have to guide them to the ladies' or men's room and then guide them back.
They're encouraged to stay in the car though. They're encouraged to stay in the car.
Yeah, it's the, it's the 15-minute convenience factor, that, that's what differentiates us from our primary competition.
Which is good. I mean, that, that makes sure that the flow just keeps on moving. But those are some of the suggestions that I would like to see, black gooseneck lighting and a black awning and just some of the antique lanterns consistent with the center of town. But again, I know it's not in the overlay, so I, I, I know we can't necessarily mandate it, but I do know that this is section six, right? So.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it consistent with the downtown center.
It's close.
And I'm one person, so I don't know if.
It's close to downtown town.
It's close enough and it's going to be, it would actually bring it, because that area is really kind of, language a little bit ratty in that area.
You'll be upgrading, you'll be upgrading the area.
It's industrial, yes. We'd like to make it look a little bit more like a.
So I, I think what you're trying to say, Joe, is for a more non-conforming, three-bay type of establishment, which may or may not be more non-conforming, to maybe offset that to get more to a downtown.
It's some aesthetic, really.
And be more of a gateway and.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I, I know Mercedes, when they put theirs over there, we really didn't want a dealership, but they kind of said, well, what is Burlington looking for? You know, if you want to give us something, we want to give you something. That was kind of the way they redesigned a building that, quite honestly, they had to get approval from Germany to design that way in order to accommodate Burlington's, you know.
I'm happy to look into all those things. I do have a couple of, because I'm a franchisee, I do have to go back to corporate, but we can, we can certainly look into those things. On the antique lighting, are you suggesting that's what we use in place of the site lighting that we currently have on site? Or are you asking us to add lights along the sidewalk?
So the sidewalk, if you go through the center of town, you can see antique lantern lighting, you know. I mean, it's not a long stretch here, so you probably would only be looking at maybe a few lights probably, right? I would imagine.
Two or three.
Yeah, maybe three, maybe two here and one on that side or something like that, just along the walkway.
Sidewalk area lighting are you talking about?
Yeah, like along the walkway.
Will it be mounted on a bollard or something, or architectural bollard?
On all of the, all of the development that's going on down there, we have.
So, so pole-mounted lighting?
Yeah, just like, just like that, you know, consistent with what is down in the center now. To be scattered within the landscaping in there along the walkway. Basically telling you, we, you know, you're coming into the center of Burlington.
When you say along the walkway, Joe, you're talking about the sidewalk or the internal walkway?
The sidewalk, yeah. And then the lighting on the building, if we could go with a black gooseneck, that would be great and a black awning over that, it would just really kind of, it would, it would be actually a, you know, a reason for other buildings in that area to.
Step up their game.
Form a little bit themselves and.
You'll be the example that when other, when other businesses in that area come before us, we'll tell them you have to look as good as Valvoline.
Just, just for clarification on the awning, so we do have buildings with awnings. We've been moving away from the fabric because one of the reasons we use the brick and we take such care in the building is the curb appeal is, is enduring. Could we perhaps use some type of hard materials as opposed to the, to the fabric, just because, you know, we'd fasten it to the building, it might be standing seam metal or something of that nature?
Yeah, I mean.
Is that a consideration?
I guess, if, if it were something that, you know, maybe the staff, you could work with staff and try to find something that would work over there.
I was going to suggest if you want.
I suggest if you want to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Something they could work with staff.
Yeah.
We can certainly ask our architect, you know, to.
There's a guideline on the website for the Town Center, use that as.
Sure.
Yeah. So, we, we've got examples of that, yep.
We're trying to upgrade a nineteen fifty's Town Center, which was, you know, just a pass-through for many, many years, and older buildings, and as economic conditions indicate, and if you want to see an example of it, if you go down Terry Avenue and look to your left, you'll see which is actually a group of storage buildings, but you'd never know it, because there's nice, uh, black, uh.
Right, and fencing.
Yeah, fencing along there and so forth, and, and the look of it, it's almost residential.
It's the best-looking storage.
So, we're not asking for that much, but we're, but as new buildings come along, and as you'll see on the corner, where the new health stop building is gonna be, that will be very different from what they proposed and what a usual health stop looks like. It will be much more conforming to what we're looking for as far as upgrading the Town Center. So, you're caught up in this a little bit, cause you're close enough to it, and, and we're kinda soliciting your help, really, I think, cause we, we have no ability to compel you to do that, but these are just suggestions Joe is making, yeah.
Correct.
Again, subject to Mass DOT approval of lighting.
Sure, oh, we understand, yeah.
Yes.
And they do, I mean, they've done, they've approved, well, if it was required, it was all, it's all along 3A, so I think they would have no, should have no issue with the lighting.
Yeah, we with, we live with the state on Route 3A all the time, so.
Paul, did you have any other comments?
Yes, I did, I had a few, uh, I'm always concerned with the neighbors, and one thing, Edwards Road right now, there's not a lot of traffic on there, and there's gonna be a lot of traffic coming out of here, so I would like to see on Edwards Road, further back, caution exiting vehicles, or something like that. Just so if somebody's coming down and they're not familiar, they'll be aware that there may be traffic coming, coming out of that exit. Because, I mean, if you go down Edwards now, you could.
I didn't even know it was a road until we had this come before us.
Well, somebody lives down there, cause I'm looking, that's a neighborhood area, the other thing is.
I know, it's.
There's no residents.
There's nobody down there?
That's the VFW.
Well.
Looks like a home, but it's a.
Yeah, it's a road, but, it's a road, and if you're coming out of the VFW and you had a couple, you know, you might want to know, no. Listen, I could be in the VFW, so, uh, okay, dismiss it.
All right.
Onto the next thing, when, when you were talking about, uh, uh, you know, the size of a tree, if you go over to Mary Cummings Park, you may recall that we required of Northeastern to replace and, and screen, and I'm amazed at the size of trees that they're putting in. Yeah, have you, you've been over the.
I haven't been down there yet, yeah.
Huh? Yeah, I mean, they're putting in good-sized trees, and you could cut them up high enough, so it wouldn't obstruct the view or anything, but, but you'd have, you know, a substantial-sized tree in there, so, now, so there's nobody, no residential in back of this property at all?
Not on Edwards Road.
No, or, or, or just behind the property, cause I'm looking at this, and it looks like there may be some houses back there, somewhere.
It's automotive uses, uh, I think there's a detailing shop, and then there's several auto body mechanics.
Edwards Road curls behind the site, and, and the dead end, so there's no residences.
Okay, no, I was just, Bill is always, uh, bringing our attention to lighting, and I just wanted to be sure whether there are residents or not, that, uh, we special attention to, to, uh, keep it that way.
No, I, I, thank you, Paul, yeah, I, I did take a look, and I appreciate the photometric map that you had, I thought that was really good to give us a sense of what lighting is where on site, and maybe staff, we can ask other applicants to give us photometric maps in the future, I thought that was really good, thank you very much.
Yeah, and, uh, that's good, we have the vertical granite, uh, sidewalk, so no, that will certainly, at least from the front, change the aesthetics down there, cause you've got the pizza place next door, and the glass place, and, uh, I'm older, so finding an entrance or an exit, I mean, there's no curbing along there or anything. I mean, it's just a free-for-all, you aim, and watch for the, for the cars that are coming.
Well, I think this will help a lot with that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, that was it.
Thank you, um, quick clarification from staff, the sidewalk, where you have discussed that it's going to extend in front of the Phillips Glass, and we'll work with the, the tenant there about where the entrance is. Where does it stop, does it go all the way down to the other piece of concrete sidewalk that we have at Burlington House of Pizza?
Boil it down a little, or show us the front, so, um, that's, that's a comment from staff to all of you, I would like some consensus on it. So, if you go across Burlington House of Pizza, and then you go down to the telephone pole, it's all bituminous, there is some curbing, but it's all bituminous until the Hess site, or Speedway site. So, I mean, that's the gap, so you guys need to decide what you're looking at. But with all, you know, we, we talk about the gaps, and we talk about trying to fill the gaps everywhere we can, so.
Yeah.
The curb cut for House of Pizza is, is a lot bigger than it is.
Yes, and that, that, I don't like, I wouldn't want to do it unless we could close that curb cut to a normal curb cut, and I don't know if that's something that we can do. We have the, we have the ability to con- condition that.
Yeah, I mean, both of those.
So, it's in the right of way, so.
Both of the properties need to have curb cuts that serve their business, a normal curb cut would be twenty-four, twenty-six feet wide for a plaza such as the House of Pizza. Phillips Glass is gonna be substantially different because of this, the building in operation.
I think that would be an enormous benefit.
But, I mean, when you come into the House of Pizza site, you come in, you, you come in and then you turn left to park.
Yes.
So, that whole parking, the, you'd normally have a curb.
Right.
Along the front where you'd be parking, whereas that doesn't exist here, so it feels really wide, because there's only one side of the curb cut.
Right.
But, you know, when you get to B-Hop there, the, it's the high school kids that are going there, so then, it's, they're walking from the high school up, and then right to where the parking lot is anyway, so it doesn't, the only, the only place that kinda has value is right in front of Jane Phillips, which is a difficult spot. I mean, for my, my concern with the students that are, that are heading over to B-Hop.
Well, I don't think the sidewalk would prevent them from, I guess I'm losing, I think I'm losing.
That's gonna have to await somebody, cause those buildings aren't gonna be there forever.
We're just looking to provide safe pedestrian.
Access, yes.
They usually don't go up the road, you're right, Mike?
Yeah, they come through that.
They come through that, uh, they come through Arlington.
Arlington Street, right, is that what it's called?
No, it's not the street.
That other one right before Arlington, I forget what that's called.
It's a short street.
Yeah.
Anne Road.
Anne Road.
Right.
Yep, that's exactly, that's right.
I, I think, honestly, I, I think that would be an enormous benefit. I have no idea if this is something you would be amenable to considering, because it is asking you to, it's not a lot further, but it is not on your property, and I feel like we're asking a lot, but it would make an enormous difference if we could get that extended to where the other concrete walkway ends.
Um, I'm, I'm confused as to where you're talking, are you talking in front of the Phillips Glass, or are you talking in front of the House of Pizza?
Talking in front of the House of Pizza.
Just two, two properties down from us.
I said I wasn't demanding, it can't hurt to ask. You can say no.
I can, um, but no, they, I mean, there's a practical, and these guys, they've gone overboard, they've done everything that.
They're doing a very good job, I, I agree.
So, it's not even a question with, with this outfit, because they're first-class of, of, of doing what they can to spooch things up. But when you're talking about properties that they don't own, and, and affecting curb cuts of properties that they don't own, that are affecting businesses that are operating there, you're putting them right in the middle of a hornet's nest, so, I talked to Mr. Kelly today about the, um.
The Phillips Glass, yes.
Phillips Glass, and he said, you know, if you want to put a foot over on this side and a foot over on that side, I'm okay with that, but I need, my, my customer, or my tenant, needs all of the, the curb cut that he has now to get cars in and out, and they're not gonna want to give that up, so now, I'm fighting with his tenant, or I'm fighting with him.
No, no, well, he said something different to our staff, so we'll have to work that out, we're not asking you to, to fight with.
So, I, again, and I, and I don't.
Your neighbors.
They're willing to be, do everything that they can do when they've shown that, uh, but I think.
Tom, fair enough, I have to ask, you can say no.
I just want to, I don't, I don't want people to think we're being difficult, it's just.
I don't think you're being difficult, I think you've done a really good job, and I think that the site's gonna look much better than the other sites around it, and I was joking, I was not joking before when I said when other sites in that area come to us, we can point to the site and tell them, we want them to step up their game and, and make it look like yours. No, I think you're doing a really good job, and I think it's gonna look very nice, so I appreciate you trying to save the old tree, too.
Thank you, um, so the staff did bring up that extension once, and I was very uncomfortable working on somebody else's property. Tom sent us an update late today that he had talked to RJ Kelly, I actually spoke to our real estate counsel, um, and he counseled me against us trying to work on somebody else's property and force them to have curb cuts, he.
It's, it's in the right of way, though, it's not actually their property, right?
That would end them up working with the state, too, so.
It's in the right of way, it's not their property, they have a say in where the curb cut would go, though, you're right.
Yeah, I, I think the, the idea is that, um, we'd like to stay within the four corners of the Harringtons' property, um, and avoid any.
Okay, I thought we had already established the Phillips Glass part of the sidewalk, was I mistaken?
We had discussed it, we haven't concluded it yet.
Okay.
I thought we were arguing in front of Phillips Glass.
Thomas sometimes got people to do things that we couldn't get to do, so we might as well.
I, 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 for one, I would rather see this one done one hundred percent the right way.
Oh, I think it will be.
And let us deal with them when we deal with them, I, you know.
I think it will be, I think they're doing a good job with this.
I mean, with the, with the, with the caveat, the things that we've requested here, and I, you know, one of them being the, you know, the, the.
The lighting, too, yeah.
The lighting, the lighting over the, over the non-backlit sign, cause that, that's.
Right.
Kind of a.
So, let's put the sidewalk aside for a minute, and let's find out, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this matter? Okay, so you know one, and we can, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have anything else we had to address.
I would agree with Joe.
Okay, I'm fine with that, I think you're doing a really good job to, to spooch this site up, um, and I'm, so I'm okay with that. All right, um, any other questions, do you have any questions for us?
Want to close the public hearing?
I think so.
Would.
No?
So, we're consensus, stop the sidewalk at the end of the property, and do all the, they're, they'll try to do the awning, the.
Gooseneck lighting.
Gooseneck lighting and.
Save the old tree.
Lantern sidewalk. Obviously, they need to, um, they need to check with their corporate, and they, and DOT is gonna, they would DOT says, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And the tree, yeah.
And save the tree.
The tree, and.
Well, they're gonna save the tree, attempt, do all they can to save the tree, and if they can't, and they're gonna trim it, um, if for some reason.
They're never ever gonna have temporary signs on their property, ever. No sale, no flippy guy, no feather signs, ever.
Okay.
That wall sign.
No.
The wacky wind guy, yeah, I don't even like him.
No temporary signs, ever.
Inflate oil filter.
Okay.
No, that's in your condition.
Oh, and I didn't know if we could get a special permit for our grand opening for, you know, the first weekend or something of that.
Or a grand opening sign, it's fine.
Temporary sign, um.
Temporary signs, meaning, for like a weekend, perhaps, but, not temporary, when I say temporary signs, I'm.
Not every Saturday.
For advertising.
Or not there forever.
He said for the grand opening.
Until it falls over into the sidewalk.
Which lasts about two and a half years, no.
Okay. Temporary for a weekend, I would.
We'll approach the town anytime we want to do anything with the signs.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six zero. And.
Continue on, Ernie.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of Henley Enterprises Incorporated for the approval of site plan application with favorable findings pursuant to Section 6.1.1.1 and Section 6.1.2.2 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the demolition of existing structures and the construction of a two thousand one hundred and seven-foot square foot three-bay oil change structure and additional sites improvements as reflected on the site plan entitled Proposed Valvoline Instant Oil Change Facility in Burlington, Massachusetts, Middlesex County, prepared by PC Engineering and Associates dated July tenth, twenty nineteen, and revised to September twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, insisting of eight sheets site plan. The project and site plan is subject to the following terms, revisions, conditions.
As amended.
As amended.
And that's gonna have that list, that, as part of the regu- record, the list of the, um.
I'm gonna add that list, confirm it with the applicant for the forty-five.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six zero.
Doing a good job, Mike.
Can you jump back up to the special permit?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Make a motion to approve the request of Henley Enterprises for a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.1.1 alteration of a non-conforming use, and 6.1.2.2, non-conforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaws to allow for the demolition of the existing building and construction of a two thousand one hundred and seven square foot three-bay oil change structure at one eighteen Cambridge Street in Burlington, Massachusetts, and the general business BG and Water Resources WR, district subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six zero. I think we have one more somewhere.
There's one more somewhere.
Yeah, let's.
No, that's it.
Not three? I thought there were three. Wait a second, we had, we had B, C, and D.
Right, so, two of them are combined in the special permit, okay, fine, thank you.
Welcome, thank you, I think the site's gonna look great, I'm looking forward to it.
I very much appreciate that. My daughter, my daughter's getting married on Saturday, and I'm going out of town.
The storage unit, there are still seven yellow bollards down.
So, I won't respond to you till probably Tuesday.
So, we, we asked them, they had the shorter ones that did the background, but there's seven yellow, so if you look in there, all I see is yellow.
I don't think the doors have been changed either, as of last week, they haven't been changed.
Perhaps we can just ask staff offline to look into that, that, at the, at the storage facility on Terry Ave, there's still all the yellow bollards, and they have to change all the doors, they haven't done any of the things that.
Yes, we, we've been working with them.
Thank you, all right. Next up is Item 7F, a public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.7.15 antennas, other than satellite dish antennas, for the purpose of private reception of telecommunications signals, which antennas do not exceed twelve feet in height above the ground or twelve feet above the roof of a building on which they are mounted, of Northwest Park Plan Development District zoning bylaw, fifty-three Third Avenue. Selco Partnership Doing Business as Rives and Wireless is the applicant. Hi, welcome back, um, so.
Colonel Garing, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, were you able to watch the, the tape from last time?
Yes.
So, what we'd like you to do, if you could, is just update us on anything that is different from the last time that you presented to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so, again, as I asked last time, if I could just have the floor briefly, answer a lot of questions in advance, to save time. So first, I want to address the questions that were asked of me last time. Other Wegmans antennas, and also, which requested I, um, provided writing, the fact that Wegmans said that the cupola is out, so what I've provided is some emails, and as you'd mentioned to the prior applicant, you can ask, I I've caught the middle, I own the property, the rise is out of the building, we don't own the land, I've caught the middle, so, I want other parties, so, we asked, and these emails are chronological, and the one, first one.
No, you don't need to read them to us, we have them here.
For the record, Madam Chair, if you just give me the time to make my presentation.
Does he need to read them for the record, or, I don't.
I was, we, I haven't, I was.
I don't think we need to read the emails into the record.
I think you should, I think we should get just a quick summary of what they.
Basically, the concealed, Wegmans asked how concealing, how concealing is the concealed film, and then no clues, chimneys look, uh, the next email.
We don't need you to read all of the emails into the record, sir, no.
I'm sorry?
We asked you to show us that Wegmans didn't want the cupola, and we, we can accept these as proof of that, you don't need to read them all into the record.
Okay, well, the next email is that they do not have macros on any other locations.
I just said, you don't need to read them into the record, thank you.
Well, and then the next sentence, so they are not comfortable with the chimneys of the 3A material.
Sir, you do not need to read the emails into the record, we have them here in front of us, we can read them.
Okay.
Made a part of the record.
What are you currently proposing that is different from. What are you currently proposing that is different from what you proposed the last time you were here?
We are proposing this, the, what Wegmans has approved, which, again, Wegmans said attractiveness is important to the Wegmans branding.
Please don't read the emails to me again.
Look is similar to other vents on the roofs. And that was what agreed upon. So what I have are, the reason they proposed the vent roof, so what I've submitted to you is the three emails and pictures of why they said in their email attractiveness is important to Wegmans branding. Our position was the vent look is similar
What are you proposing for the vents on the roof? What do you propose that they will look like?
Vents.
And that is the only thing that Wegmans has approved?
That's the only thing. And so, and I need to, with all due respect, I need to make my presentations to the board, not just you, Madam Chair, because I know you've had conversations with staff outside of public hearing, but the rest of the board is not privy to this information I provided.
I have not had any separate conversations. I'm all, you made your presentation at the last meeting, so it's fine for you to present to us what you're proposing today, and that's fine. But we don't need to, we don't want to start over.
Yeah, we're not starting over. So this is what Wegmans
Has approved.
They want, they only want the desk stacks, that's what they have on the roof. Well, what are they talking about? So we went up on the roof and these are what they have on the roof now, which is why they said those are harmonious with their look. This is a neighborhood building, so you can see the kind of stuff they have up there. This is what
Can you use the microphone just so people at home can hear?
You can
This is a hand held proposal, which is in harmony with what Wegmans has suggested is their corporate look, not just in Burlington, but nationwide. They are very particular. We've been spending two weeks trying to, I guess argue would be the wrong term, but be persuasive that we, could we have some consideration for alternate designs? And they're very emphatic that this is their look. And so, also, when you read the bylaw, this is compliant with the bylaw. This is stealth. Now, there's a misconception of stealth. You want it to be attractive or something that draws your attention to it. On the contrary, stealth, the whole point of stealth is something that you don't notice, that you don't do a double take to. It's something you, it just passes, you don't take note of. And that's what we've provided. And if you look at these in context with, here's the type of stuff they have on their roof. Here's what we're proposing. And I also included in here a citation from a well-respected planning expert, Kevin Lynch, site planning staff, probably studied there, this gentleman in class, in school. And from Mr. Lynch's book, chapter five, visual form, I'm quoting on page 60, moreover, there are limits to, and this is talking about what the visual, what a person perceives. And at my last, at last hearing, I mentioned studies that suggest that when a person parks a car, gets out of the car, they look as high as sort of the sign face above a store. They're not looking around up on tall building roofs. This reinforces that, where there are limits to the angle of clear vision and to the rapidity of scanning. So if an object whose major dimension equals its distance from the eye, is difficult to see at a whole that tends to be analyzed in detail. When it's twice as far away as its major dimension, it then appears more clearly as a whole. When it's three times, when it's thrice as far, it is still dominant in the visual field, but is seen in relation to other objects. As the distance increases beyond four times the major dimension, the object simply becomes part of the general scene.
Thank you. I have
Antennas are, we already modified, lowered the beta sector so that the highest visual you have above that parapet is seven feet.
Okay, I understand. This is what you presented before, so we understand what you're presenting.
No, this is new material. This is, I'm citing to Kevin Lynch.
No, I don't, that, no, what you're presenting to us is what's gonna be on top of the building. What's in the book is not relevant to what we're looking at on top of this building. Please let me speak. I have one question regarding these, the emails that you presented us with. Wegmans asked the question about how concealing is the concealing film. Were there additional conversations after that? Did Wegmans approve or not approve the concealing film?
They did not approve it.
They, they said no to it. Okay, fine. Let me speak to staff quickly and then we're gonna, I'm gonna get some comments from the board as to how we want to proceed. Because from what you're telling me, if I understand you correctly, Wegmans will approve only this little metal stack that you've shown us here.
Which is what's called stealth, which is compliant with your bylaw.
Staff, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
I do. But let me, I want to clarify what is in front of us.
Okay.
So there was an original application with vent type structures that were colored similar to the colors of Wegmans. Is that what we're looking at right now?
Well, they were always like a gray color, just a new
Or a gray color, but they're not shiny metal like you're showing in this
No, it's all, right.
In here. Okay. So I think, I think the confusion rests in that we went through an extensive exercise of trying to find alternatives. And now we're being presented with, well, forget that exercise, it's only the original.
Right.
And I think that's what's frustrating the conversation a little bit. Because, you know, if we're presented with alternatives, we're assuming those alternatives are something that we have
Right.
We should be discussing. And it sounds like Wegmans is, was never presented those alternatives to sign off on. So, so I think that's what frustrates us here. I mean, I think today, we talked about at the last meeting and found some comfort in the, the this type of thing with the 3M on two of the sites. And, and that's what we had printed out for you here.
I actually didn't discuss that at the last meeting. I don't recall hearing. I have the tapes. I watched the tapes. I was never discussed.
Please let her finish. Go ahead.
And then potentially an alternative for what you could see from the back of the site, the, not the back of the site, but the parking garage side of the site, that was more like a, a square structure as presented by Mr., Mr. Gehrig, where kind of when he had the demonstration of it can be a cone or it can be a square, but it can't have too much loading because, because of the, because of the way in which that their ballast mounted. So I think that was all understood and appreciated. So, you know, at this meeting, we were, we had printed these out to say, okay, this kind of sums up where we were at the last meeting. The attorney was gonna check with Wegmans to see where Wegmans was with these, because apparently they had not signed off on these other, other structures. So again, as I said, it's kind of, I think it's frustrated the discussion to have options that were never really options. So in the meantime, there's been lots of back and forth with some of the present, some of the information presented from the applicant, just about wireless in general. And I do want to just note for the record that we did get a memo from the building inspector about this item. And I'm just gonna summarize it. But, "The application is before the planning board to approve a wireless communication facility on the rooftop of 53 Third Ave, located within the Northwest Park Plan Development District and wireless communications overlay. In the Northwest Park PD, Article 2, Use Table 1717, Wireless Communication Facility refers back to the Burlington zoning bylaw, Article 4, Section 4.3114G. Use Table in Article 8, Section 8.40, Wireless Communication Overlay. Through these regs allowed wireless communication facilities by right, I believe, and approval by the, by the planning board is still required. The existing structure 53 Third Ave Wegmans was approved by the planning board via special permit approximately 2013, 2014, for the development and construction of 140,000 square foot grocery, retail grocery facility, ancillary fast order food with mezzanine cafe and structured parking. Nowhere in this decision did it outline the use of a wireless communication facility. Item 7D of the approved special permit says in short, "Any future redevelopment or amendment shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board." Also M states, "Renouls or alterations of the special permits shall be subject to the planning board." So although the use of the zoning bylaw allows for wireless communication facilities by right, Article 8, because this sits within the PD district, then, as well as the site development use plan that was Wegmans, that some sort of amendment or acknowledgement and approval of that additional use on Wegmans is required, as well as Article 8, Section 8.41, Wireless Communication Facility still requires a planning board to approve the wireless communication facility relative to visual and aesthetic concerns. So, anyway, that's a short and long, I guess, long way to say that the planning board does have oversight here. Whether it was an amendment to Wegmans, which I don't think we want to open that, that at this point, or it's a special permit that's in front of us today, I think we have, you know, in order to allow for this use, you could go down either pathway. But, you know, again, I, just these options, I think, are what are bringing us to this point. Whereas now, we're going back to, it's the first, the first one and only the first one, do you want to approve it or not approve it. So, that's, that's, that's where we are.
Okay, I understand. So, okay. So let me turn it over to the board and we'll see where the board, how the board is feeling about this. So, Ernie, would you like to start?
Okay, I'm a, I'm a little bit confused. I don't know if anybody else is. But, so what you're saying now is that your wireless antennas on the roof of Wegmans are going to look like the existing vents or not?
What's in the picture here?
Which picture am I looking at?
The antennas will be hidden inside a structure, which is, no, that's an example of what's up there.
Okay.
To reinforce why Wegmans, Wegmans said, "We don't like the cupola, we don't like the chimneys, we don't want the, we have, we like the stack because that's what's on our, that's what's on our stores."
They like the stack.
So we thought, all right, let's go up there and see what they're talking about. So we went up and looked. Those are examples of what's up there already.
So what is your wireless antenna gonna look like this?
No, go a couple pages further on your the next after, after Mr. Lynch's, Mr. Lynch's memo, they look like this. You have, you all have a small version of this, after Kevin Lynch's citation, like, last page there. It's basically this. And I just want to clarify that the very first hearing on, on September 19th, we, we proposed this. The board had some concerns. They said, "Can you come up with something else?" In the meantime, we went back to the drawing board. We proposed to Wegmans some different ideas. We shared those with staff. This board has never had a discussion about this. Board in totality, as a group, has never had a discussion. Because the last hearing on October 3rd, I submitted some additional material, examples of existing antennas in Burlington, which are not as stealth as these, in our opinion. We've gone above and beyond. And other examples generally stealth. And I gave the whole explanation of a ballast mount and so forth. So this board has never been privy to it. In the meantime, we were going out to our landlord, "Hey, could you, could you look at these?" And we shared them with staff. So, Madam Chair, I know you saw those, but the rest of the board did not.
So this is
That's it. All right.
These three?
So basically, those are, those are what we're proposing, which is, I apologize, we, in good faith, went out to our landlord to try, and we spent a lot of money on engineering and photo sims and running around and phone calls, right up until several hours before I drove up here today, trying to convince folks otherwise. But as you pointed out to the prior applicants, we, we can't make someone, someone else own the land do something they don't agree with.
Wegmans has control over this and they, so, and we understand what you're telling us, that Wegmans does not want any of those other
Like, why can't they, why don't they work with us here? And then they pointed out, hey, you know, we've got a corporate look here. We don't want you guys messing with that. And if you, and that's what I pointed out last time, this, this view of Wegmans, these are beautiful stories, not just in Burlington, everywhere. They have a look, and it has to be reviewed all at higher levels and so forth. So this is what they said looks good to them.
That's what they want.
We looked at it and thought, okay, will that fly under the bylaw? Yes, that is stealth. The point of stealth is you don't want it to be so attractive. It's like, wow, that's a bad thing. You want it to be something that you don't notice. It just blends in.
Okay, we, we understand. Can I ask a quick question? These particular stacks that you're showing, are they going to be the gray metal or are they going to be this sort of
Copper.
Beige color that matches
A flat gray. And we can take that little cap
Well, because in the pictures, they look like they match the color of the building, but that's not what they're going to be. They'll be gray. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah, but we can take the little cap off.
Did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So as I look at these emails, I look at the last sentence from the October 8th one, it says, and I'm gonna read through the email if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Yes, it is.
Unfortunately, if we cannot agree on the original design, we're not gonna be able to progress further. So I looked at that one, I said, and looking at Wegmans website, they've got 99 stores. They've got 46 in New York, 18 Pennsylvania, Northeast, and they've got six in Mass. They don't have a store, they don't have any store with macro antennas. So they don't have, they don't have a precedent. They don't have any design rules of what they, basically, they don't have any on
This is not a Wegmans
Right. So Wegmans is saying, hey, you know what, we, we don't have anything else and, you know, if you, if you're not going with the stacks, these vents, then we're kind of done.
Right.
So I said, okay, so what are our options here? This is not a Wegmans proposal. This is, is there other, other buildings in the area that were satisfied, the same coverage area, that don't look like Wegmans? Because we're having, we're having Harper in here to say, "Wegmans looks great," right? They spent a lot of time and money to make it look what it looks like. And it does look great. Then you say, okay, we're trying to put these on and how, how can we make it? And Wegmans saying, you know what, we want it to stay great, right? So is there a building next door, across the street, somewhere local where they can put vent type things and it's not gonna take away from the, you know, from the look of the building?
The aesthetic of the building, yeah.
That's where I kind of stand on this one. I think there might be alternatives there without putting on Wegmans and, you know, spend all the time
Still has to be in the overlay district.
Yeah, and then, but then I kind of, I'm thinking a little bit more. I'm saying, okay, we've got new residents there and there's an overlay district that didn't include residents at that time. And I keep on going back to our overlay district, that was 20 years ago. And it wasn't the, wasn't the power of the antennas is today, the number of antennas is today. Now we have 300, gonna be 600 residents, at least 300 right across the street and another 300 somewhere close, that wasn't incorporated in the overlay district with these particular things. So I think that really changes things. And I take pause on this, saying, okay, we're gonna put it somewhere maybe even close right to, right to, you know, 600 residents, which is not the intent of the overlay.
Right.
So, is there another building right next door? Yeah, that wouldn't, that would look okay with the chimney? So that's where I, that's where I said with that. I said, you know, it looks like, you know, that looks like Wegmans can say, if you don't, you know, you're not doing it, then they're done. And I think that they need to be there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Bill kind of stole my thunder that if, if it's not gonna happen to Wegmans, maybe this is the wrong place for them. And that's my only comment.
Joe?
I agree. I mean, I'm, what's more concerning to me that is Kristin, actually, you know, we went through all this process and we were given options and then we were told, sorry, you don't have any options. I mean, we should have known that from the beginning if that were the case, I guess, right? You know, this is a focal point. This, this building was actually, the way it was set up, was set up to be a focal point. It was actually, it was supposed to be like a castle at the end of the, you know, the roadway. And it was, you know, a focal point. And now, you know, we're, we're told it's, you know, we're gonna put smoke stacks on there that don't really, in my opinion, can, you know, comply with the aesthetics of the building. But, you know, and, and I, you know, I was prepared to come here today, you know, if, if we had to bend and make it a chimney, okay, I can deal with the brick chimney because the building is brick and we can kind of live with that a little bit if that's what's gonna be seen. But, you know, like Bill said, we, you know, we had, you know, prep before this was, while this building, before this, after this building was built, you know, there were residences that, you know, were gonna be looking down over this. And it would be additional residents that will be looking at, down over this building.
Just looking at it, but the whole purpose of the overlay is to keep
Keep it away from
Antennas away from residential buildings.
Right, certain, certain, you know
For protection.
Distances from, from residences as well as daycares and
Church, yeah.
Any, you know, places where children are gonna, are gonna assemble or anything like that. So, again, I, I guess I echo, only I was
Right.
With more words, I echoed it. But it's echoed, you know, basically what they're saying is that if Wegmans doesn't carry the weight, then maybe they need to just find another building.
Thank you, Joe. Paul?
Do you want me to summarize?
I want you to say whatever you want to say.
Thank you, I will. To me, it's kind of a tempest in the teapot. I have a question for you. See that stand there with the microphone on it? Compare that to the size of the antenna. If there's, if you just, we said, go ahead, put the antennas up. What would it look like in, in height and so forth? Like in diameter, would it be much bigger than that, smaller than that?
Two feet in diameter and, and you'd see seven feet sticking above the parapet.
So, so two feet, so it's that big around the antenna?
But seen from 100, 100 feet away. That was my point of citing Mr. Lynch, is it's, it's not something you're gonna notice. I mean, you'll notice it because you know, you know all about it. But a member of the public pulling up and parking is not gonna take note. You don't want to draw their eye to it. You want it to just be, oh, there's a stack. That's not an unusual thing to see on the roof of a, a vent stack.
Well, to me, something that was cut like the sky. So you'd look up and you said you want, in the army, we call that camouflage. You wanna camouflage it so that, you know, somebody notices it. And I would just take that. And, and I did, if you'll excuse me, when the subject of chimneys came up, I was rather quickly taken up on that by one of my fellow members who I very much respect. by one of my fellow members, who I very much respect. But when I said, forget the chimneys, I was taken to task. So, but I will say, there's one vote against chimneys, if that's what it comes up to. But let me just put it into a context. Uh, we're fortunate, my wife and I, we're retired, we can do whatever we want, and the season is so great, we said, let's go up and do the Cancomagus. So we did that the day after the holidays. And I'll tell you, it was remarkable. It's never been prettier. We took two hours going there, never went more than thirty miles an hour. Going up, we're looking up, we're coming over a hill, this pride to that, and we're looking up, here's this beautiful scene, and right in the middle of it is an antenna. And I said, well, that's disgusting. Who would allow that antenna there? Well, all the people that have cell phones are the ones that would allow the antenna there. It's the same thing, you can go up to Maine, beautiful, you see nothing but pine trees and an antenna. There are some that have ten arrays on them, so they're gonna be a hundred and fifty feet tall. Why would we put up with that? Because we want to use cell phones. You, five G is coming, whether we like it or not, and so we have to allow the antennas. And to me, what's on a roof, you know, unless it's something really ugly, doesn't affect my, my look of the building very much. If it's a church and it has a steeple, that's one thing, but other than that, I don't look and say, gee, look at that ugly thing on the roof. I don't know what's up there and why it's up there. So that's, that's kind of my feeling about it. I would just say, paint the antennas like the sky, and, uh, please, no chimneys.
I think we're not allowed to paint them anything other than the gray, according to Wegman's. Wegmans wants just the gray.
Well, I, I'll take gray. I'll take gray. And by the way, I want to compliment you. I think you have great patience, and you've tried to do everything that you think the board wants you to do to get this done, 'cause that's what you're paid to do. But I think you've done it very well, and I, and I appreciate your, your patience and presentation.
Well, thank you. I, I feel like I made a mistake by offering these other suggestions before they approved of it. I'm trying to save time. I knew we were continued in two weeks, so I threw them out there. I made the photos, we made the photo sims up.
We understand, but Wegmans didn't approve them.
Sent them to Wegmans, sent them, sent them to staff. So not, not the whole board saw those, and then in the meantime, we're trying to get the permission.
Okay.
The very last email, where Wegman said, you know, attractiveness is important. So, you know, they approved this, though. They think it looks fine on their building.
We understand.
I vote, I vote to accept that from you.
And then they said, are there any other rooftop antennas in Burlington? Have they used any covering?
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this matter?
These other examples that I showed you last week are what's in Burlington. Now, how are we any less?
It, we're not considering other properties right now. We're only considering the property that's before us. This is a different property, it's a PDD, it does not apply, the same rules do not apply. So, right now, I think we're at the point where we're ready to vote. Yes.
I noticed there's two steeples on this building. Have you talked about hiding your antennas in the steeples?
They can't go in those. Now, we've already looked at that. It's structurally infeasible. They don't want them in there. But I also want to just clar- clarify something, Madam Chair.
Structurally feasible, or they, or they don't want them in there? Which, which?
Any of them. They don't want us messing with their cupolas and steeples. Yeah. Madam Chair, I just want to correct something for the record. You said that this is different. Actually, what the planner cited too is that condition, administrative condition D of the special permit from two thousand fourteen, talked about Wegmans being approved, a hundred and forty thousand square feet of grocery, plus X number of indoor seats, X number of outdoor for a total of Y, plus a parking garage. And then it went on to say that, um, any, any future redevelopment or amendment shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board according to the PDD zoning provisions. Okay, so in section, first of all, wireless is an accessory use under Article four, and on Article eight point four point three L, wireless is allowed on any building that has a lawful permitted use, a principal use. It's accessory, it's not a change of use. Then it says, it says, go to the PDD zoning, the PDD zoning, with all due respect, may I speak, may I speak?
We asked our building inspector for an opinion. He told us that this is up to us.
It is, and I'm getting to that. I'm getting to that. I'm getting, I'm just clarifying what you said. The, that it's getting, it's your determination under the PDD zoning provisions. The PDD zoning division provisions allow, refer back to Section eight point four, which allow wireless on rooftops by right. So it's your by right decision, but it's still the same criteria, same design criteria, same approval criteria, stealthing and camouflaging. We, this is stealth, and this is camouflage. This is more so than anything else in Burlington.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. Staff, am I correct in understanding that this is our decision and is within our rights to say yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
According, yeah, as further evidenced by the memo from the building department.
Okay, we have a memo from the building department.
My, my recommendation, you know, what, you have two things, and we went into today with a recommendation of the, what you're seeing here, except with the three M covering.
And the chimney.
And the, the chimney, which was actually not brick, it's of the same material of the, of the, the same color and trim of the facade here, not brick. So, you have a couple options. You can vote this, you can vote this plus recommendations that they do this, and they could continue to further working with Wegmans. Um, and/or if they can't do the chimney piece, 'cause that's not favorable, at least try to get the three, the, the three M material is kind of like, um, it reflects back the sky, so it-
I thought that we were told that they did not approve the three M material.
Well, we can say that, you know, we recommend that you continue discussing-
Well, there's a difference between a recommend and a condition.
Well, you can, so you can do-
Recommend if it doesn't, has no T.
You have to do it, we want you to do it, continue to try to do it, or we continue it. Um, but it just, it feels like, um-
I don't, from what I'm hearing, it sounds to me that we have to vote on, on it the way it's being proposed, which is the, the flatter gray, not shiny stacks.
Well, what other color and texture would you?
Not with a, a chimney look, either of brick or of the color that blends with the building. That's what's being proposed, the gray stacks.
That is, but, but we've never had a discussion about this. This is what I've been asking for.
We have had discussions about it, thank you. So what we're voting on is the gray stacks, not a chimney, not three M.
Well, what's being presented to you is that that's what they're, that's what Wegmans has allowed them to do.
Right.
So, yes.
So that's what we're voting on.
But what I would ask is, it, to get the, I asked if I could poll the board last time, and I was shot off. No, we can't. Okay, we're all here, we're all present now, we're here. What are the board's preferences? Is it-
That's what we just did.
So what, specifically, though, what, what, and then we could try one more time. We could ask for a continuance and try one more time.
I suggest you listen to the board saying that they're, what Wegmans has said they will accept is acceptable to us.
It's not.
Not?
Not to all of us.
All right. Sure, no, no, I've, but if you want a chimney or any-
No, no, I get you.
Well, if Wegman says, so we're saying what Wegmans will accept, we want.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying? 'Cause you said that wouldn't be acceptable to us.
Can we individually say what we might be interested in seeing?
I'd love to hear.
If we can do it quickly, let's not, yes.
We need guidance, please.
I, I, I would be, I would be intere-, I would be willing to vote yes for something such as these stacks, but with the three M material on it, to, to make it, uh, blend in more, I guess it's.
Camouflage. Thank you. Bill?
Sure, I, I would be interested if they could put him in the steeples.
Okay.
There was, there was conversation about structural-
But lacking that, sir, what, 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 what kind of treatment? Because, uh, uh, steeples, I don't think is gonna work for them, with all due respect. Structurally, and there, there's all kinds, and then you have to get the coax cable from there. It's just, there's a, that's not gonna work. So what are the types of treatments of this stealth?
So it's not gonna work because, again, you can't get cable up there?
Co-, you have to connect the coax cables from the antenna to the equipment, there's structural issues, I could tell you that part.
They're not gonna let us do it.
And they don't want you messing with the steeple.
Yeah, they're not gonna let us do that.
Oh, not at all.
So it can't happen, but they don't want you to. So-
Well, what we, in our, in our conversation, what we heard that Wegman said, 'cause these, as we talked about last week, they're ballast mounted. They sit on the roof. What the applicant has told us is anything that attaches physically to the structure is not something they're interested in. So I'm just clarifying, 'cause I think it's being said in different ways, but it's not just-
So I think you're limited on this particular building, so-
We're polling the board.
Yeah, I think you're limited. Um, so, from what I've seen here and presented, now, do I get to vote on something that Wegman said yes or no on? 'Cause I guess I don't get to vote on the, the existing, um, steeples, so can I vote on chimney?
Well, I think what we're doing right now is not voting. He's asking what you prefer to see.
My preference isn't something that Wegmans is not approving. So I, I have no, I have no say.
I'd like to see the, I'd be found the canisters if we use the three M to try and change the color or make it match with the sky.
Thank you.
I think one of them is more visible than the others, and I think that one, I, I thought we had talked about one of them being a chimney, and maybe the other ones being the stacks with the three M on them. So I think that would be the option I would be, uh, amenable to.
And I think, Paul, you said you-
I'm with Mike.
Which was the three Ms. Okay, so-
I'm sorry, Mr. Raymond, what was your preference?
I said, I'm with Mike.
Mike said he preferred the three M material on the stacks. So-
And Madam Chair, what's your?
I'm, 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 I'm voting for what Wegmans says they'll accept.
Okay.
It's their building.
The three M or not three M?
Yes.
They don't, they don't want three M, Paul.
Yeah, but I don't think they probably understand.
So, do, I'm asking my board, do we want to, I'm, I'll make a proposal. We can either vote on the stacks with the three M material, or we can vote on the stacks with just the gray as presented. How does the board feel?
You want a motion?
No, I'm asking how we-
I would say we vote with the three M material.
Okay, if that's the case, I would like a motion, and we'll see what happens.
Well, well, tell them you're gonna accept, or we give you one.
Or we can continue, we, now that we understand where you're coming from, thank, thank you for that. We could continue and try to push Wegmans one more time. I mean, we're, we're in the middle here, we're doing, in all good, we're doing our best.
Well, the thing is, we can vote with it, with three M material, or we can vote on it with gray. I think if we vote on it with the three M material, and you go back to Wegmans, and they say no, then you have your answer.
I would suggest that, let them, give them a continuance, if they can make something that's amenable to all of us. I, I don't want to go through to get it either by the board. If they can work something out that's amenable to us, I, I, I just let them do it. I mean, that's, I, I, I don't.
If we could get them to agree to all, to three M on all three of them, because that, in theory, is supposed to make it disappear, would that be acceptable to the board?
Can't, we're not voting on that.
I know, I'm trying to get an idea, I'm trying to have a discussion, so we have something to-
Till we vote, I can't say for sure if that would pass or not. I think you've heard that many members seem to think that would be acceptable. I don't know if it would pass or not. So does the board prefer to continue or vote tonight?
Can I ask a question of the applicant?
Yes.
Um, so, the three M material is a really new material. Do you, do you feel that Wegmans understands what it is?
No, 'cause we didn't, we weren't able to give them any examples. We'd have to do more research on that.
Because, I mean, essentially, the research that we've done, I mean, it's, it's just kind of a coating on, on existing things.
It's a wrap, yeah.
Right, like, I mean, it's like contact paper, kind of, I mean, a little different, obviously, but, and more permanent and weatherproof, but-
Right.
And whether you paint it gray, or whether you have this three M material, it, I don't know, I, I just wanted to understand the conversation with Wegmans so far on the material, because it just, it doesn't seem like a, a big push.
Well, so on October first, they said, "How concealing is the concealed film?" We were trying to get more information. And then on the, on the eighth, they said, "They talked about it further, and they're not comfortable with it." Well, maybe if we provided some more information to them, you know, we worked them a little bit, that, that's-
So let me ask the board, what is the will of the board? Do you want to vote tonight, or do you want to continue?
Continue is fine.
Okay, let's, I would entertain a motion then.
Motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of November seventh, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Okay, with the understanding that when you come back, we're either gonna vote on the stacks with the three M material with, that Wegmans has approved, or we'll vote on the stacks without the three M material as Wegmans has approved. So when you come back, that's gonna be the simple question, okay?
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, we would, we-
All those in favor?
Tell them they'll get approval with the three M material and other ones.
We don't know that.
We don't know that.
All those in favor?
Sure, yes.
Opposed, six, zero. So we continue to November seventh. Thank you.
John, did you get all that?
All right, moving on. We do not have minutes. How are we doing on minutes?
I don't know, I think we're making progress.
We are doing better on minutes. We need to, we're get, we're getting there.
Okay, maybe we can try and get some cranked out next week?
Yes, even if this was a shorter week.
Yes, it was, and I know you're shorthanded as well. I just also know that we're getting some heat from-
Seventeen applicants.
Yes, I know, that's great.
Can I bring up the elephant, Norm?
I'm sorry, the what?
The elephant.
I'm not sure what that elephant is, so I don't-
Big master plan that we still have to vote on.
Oh, okay. Yes, you can bring up that.
Yeah.
Can we say we will do it by January?
Do what by January? Approve it by January?
Vote on it.
Yes.
We have to. I mean, we signed this in twenty fourteen, I believe.
Although the process has, I think-
Yeah, but the process has not done any-
Am I correct in understanding that the only element left that we don't have consensus